Good morning, want to call to order this the April 11th, 2017 meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors and we want to thank all of you who've joined us on this early spring Tuesday morning and I guess during spring break and so we know what you're doing on your spring break, you're spending it with us this morning, so glad you're here. And I know we have a number of presentations and we're gonna get to those in just a moment, well after we get our meeting called to order and call our quorum, our roll call for a quorum. And I would just note that Supervisor Serna is not with us here for this meeting this morning, he's out of town and so what you see is what you get as far as the number of members here and again, we welcome you and thank you for being with us and we look forward to recognizing a number of you and your organizations as we move into the morning's agenda. So with that being said, I'd ask Flo Evans, our clerk, to call the roll, establish a quorum, read any announcements and then we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance and we'll get started.
Good morning Supervisors. Supervisor Serna, Kennedy, Peters, Frost, Natoli, and you have a quorum. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and is webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, April 14th at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any local library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address the board may fill out a speaker slip and hand it to staff. When the Chair calls your name, please come to the podium. Please also take a moment to silence your electronic devices.
Okay, thank you. All right, with that, we actually have a young man who's shadowing me today and that's what he's doing on his spring break and so he's Eagle Scout and he's in the audience and I've seen him lead a number of opening ceremonies for Courts of Honor, so I'm gonna ask Christian Alvarado to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Christian, if you'd rise and have folks join you in leading us in Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Christian. All right, with that, I know we have some questions, comments on the consent calendar but because of the number of presentations and folks in the audience and difference of their time, I think we'll go ahead and take those as a block this morning, Flo. So if you call those out, we'll take action on that portion of the consent calendar, we'll do the presentations and come back to the remaining portion of the consent calendars.
Okay, so for your consent matters with respect to the resolutions, you have items 52 through 61 in order?
Okay, do we have a motion on those?
I'm sorry, I have to want to point out, I'm recusing on item 35 as an economic conflict of interest.
Okay, well, we're gonna hold on that portion of consent, we're just doing just the resolution portion, just 52 through 61 right now.
52 through 61.
Have a cold, my ears aren't working that well.
Okay, we have a motion, Chair was, okay, second by Mr. Kennedy to approve items 52 through 61 which are resolutions in honor and proclaiming certain events and so with that being said, have anybody signed up to speak? No one? All right, please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
Okay, and then we're gonna go to presentations in the order that they're showing.
So our first presentation is item 63. It's the presentation of resolution congratulating the Sacramento County Farm Bureau on its 100th anniversary.
Okay, I'm gonna bring all these down with me and you'll call them out as we get through the presentations and I'll just stay down with the folks, so. Okay, to my colleagues and certainly to the audience this morning, as Chair, it's my honor certainly to join with my fellow members of the Board, certainly the broader Sacramento community to recognize the Sacramento County Farm Bureau and we have a number of folks here and I don't know if they all want to join me or if you have designated, if you want your President, Virginia Chabra, to receive this, but I know we have a number of members here and I believe just to, before I get into presentation, we have our current President and actually, I think, believe the first female President of the Sacramento County Farm Bureau, Virginia Chabra, who's a member of the Hemley family and a farm in this community for about 165, 170 years.
Yes.
And along with her, did you want to do introductions or you want me to go through the list? Do you want to tell us who all is here?
It's a little more official if you don't.
Oh, is it? Okay, we'll make sure I can, I see we have Mike Tedesco, who's a farmer and rancher, many generations in this community, who's with us. Dan Romer, is that Dan? Yep, there's Dan. Dan, farmer's been in dairy and in cattle for how many generations?
Three.
Three, four, four generations. Guy Rutter, is Guy? Okay, Guy didn't make it. Matt Frank? Okay, Matt didn't make it. Kevin, I see Kevin Stewart up there, Kevin? And how many generations for your family?
Quite a few.
Quite a few, okay. And grapes and?
Grapes and cattle, pretty obvious for a victory.
Okay, and then is there anyone else of your Board?
Not.
Okay, okay, and then we have your staff members, I'll let you introduce, you have a new Executive Director.
New Executive Director Eric Stein.
Oh, there's Eric right there, he's the guy behind the camera, okay, so we have Eric. And again, we've known Charlotte Mitchell, who was your ED for better than a decade, I believe, took a job with the Servancy, was a-
Central Valley Farm and Trust.
Central Valley Farm and Trust. And so we congratulate Eric and wish you well, you're with a great organization, it's been around for 100 years. And then we have Jill Damsky, Jill, and then Amanda Battle. Amanda, thank you. So and they've been holding down the fort while they've been finding a new Executive Director and so we welcome anybody else that I missed. Okay, well, with that being said, it is a real pleasure to stand before all of you and to have Virginia here at my side to congratulate an organization that has represented farmers and ranchers, families and individuals in this community for 100 years. And obviously, going back to the very early settlement, as demonstrated by the folks here that are representative and reflective of the farm organization, these are, in a lot of cases, families that were early in the settlement and development of our community, came here, you know, planted their flag, so to speak, made their lives and been a part of the fabric of the communities, just as the farm bureau's been around for 100 years, for more than 100 years. And I know at their annual dinner, a few weeks ago, they had recognition from a number of state representatives and certainly our federal representatives, but again, I know we certainly claim these folks as ours as well because as a county, we see over a half of, half a billion dollars in farm gate economic activity. We have people that are represented here this morning, they represent a whole lot of other folks who, again, as I said, are a part of the fabric of the community, they're part of the business community, they're part of the family structure of our churches and our schools and again, are the folks, again, who make a difference, not only providing for food and fiber, but certainly in the way of life that we enjoy and have for well over 100 years in this community. So it's my pleasure, again, without going into all the detail, but certainly to acknowledge the newest in a long line of succession of leadership on the Farm Bureau as far as their President and their Executive Director, but also their Board, who again, serve no compensation and they can, like a Board of Supervisor member, all the guffey can take and more, right? Yeah, at times, but for a good cause, to advance the cause of certainly of agriculture, of good agricultural practices, of farming and production of, as I said, food and fiber here in our community. So with that being said, with a long history that now is into its second century already, we want to congratulate the Farm Bureau for all its good work, for its leadership, for the work that is done and we express our gratitude to the local farmers and ranchers and their families, their employees and all who are associated with agriculture for their collective contributions to the quality of life inherent both in the production of goods and certainly of food and fiber, but of a way of life here in this community that we certainly support and promote and certainly we appreciate very much. So congratulations, Virginia, this presented to you on behalf of your membership, let you tell a little bit about, you know, current membership and what your goals are for this year. Congratulations. And we did, if you'll notice, we had a watermark there that had your 100th anniversary in there as well, so you can put that on the wall with the other ones you've received and if you need copies for your fellow members, we can do those as well, so, but I'll turn it over to you, let you say a few words.
Okay, it's going to be super duper short because I was not thinking to prepare something, so this is totally on the fly and I get myself into trouble if I do that too much.
Stand a little closer to the microphone so we can hear you.
Thank you very much. Farm Bureau is, you know, obviously near and dear to my heart, Sacramento County is definitely near and dear to my heart and I just thank the Board of Supervisors for everything that you have done to enable us to continue to do what is our passion, which is to grow food and fiber for our community and our country. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody, other members want to say anything? Anybody else come prepare for the speech? Kevin? Dan? Mike? Okay, well, again, thank you so much for being here, again, they've taken time out of their busy, did you want to get a picture with all of you folks here though? You can do that if you, come on up here real quickly and then we'll, okay, yeah. Eric, you can do this however you want, if you can get on the stairs if you like, go on and get on the stairs. So with that, we have other presentations and again, certainly our congratulations to the Farm Bureau and we have a couple of speakers on the next item, but go ahead and-
Item 64 is the presentation of resolution proclaiming April 2017 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Sacramento County.
Okay, and I get Sheila, Stephanie, if you want to come up here, but we had some speakers, you're gonna have some folks who are gonna offer some comments after we do the proclamation, do you want to do it beforehand?
Why don't I do it beforehand?
Okay, okay, good, go ahead.
Oh, no, you can go ahead.
Okay, this, okay, all right. Okay, before the speaker, okay.
You're the Chair, you get to go first.
Yeah, I know, but I'm showing deference to all of our guests. This has become an annual event, certainly here before the Board of Supervisors, but I think it's very important that we don't lose sight that just because we do it annually that we recognize not only the good work of the folks that are our partners in attempting to, I think, not only reduce and hopefully someday eliminate child abuse, that's all bodied up in the word prevention, but I think we want to recognize that this is ongoing effort. For the 40 years that the Child Abuse Prevention Council has been serving this community, obviously their focus has been there, but it's been a focus of this county, its partners for now generations to break the cycle of neglect and abuse in the family structures, to have healthier families and certainly children that know that they're loved and nurtured in their home setting, but certainly in the community broadly. And so as we do this annually, I think it's just a reaffirmation of work that goes on each and every day and certainly Sheila Boxley on behalf of the Council and Stephanie Bigler and others that are here have been real leaders in that regard, have been partners with our county staff who, again, I think rely very heavily on some of the expertise and efforts that they do certainly as partners in this community to help families, strengthen them to break the cycle of abuse. And so, again, we join, as we have done for many years, and recognize April 2017 this year as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Sacramento County. We thank the Child Abuse Prevention Council for their work, but also all of our partners that help make for stronger families and healthier and happier children. So with that, I'll present this to you, Sheila. Congratulations. And another one, do you add to the, I don't know how many you got on the wall, but-
Well, a few.
A few, a few.
But we treasure each one. I want to echo what you just said about partners because typically I'm the person who comes up here and receives the proclamation each year. Excuse me, I too have a cold.
My sympathy.
But we have, we have some very strong partnerships and not the least is certainly your Board as well as your Department of Health and Human Services have been great partners and funders, which we appreciate. Likewise, First Five Commission, excuse me, have been very supportive financially and in other ways, but there's also a broad partnership here in the county of organizations and individuals who really have dedicated themselves to preventing child abuse and neglect and strengthening families and strengthening our communities. And so there's a very strong birth of Beyond Partnership. It has been a long marriage and indeed, it's been something of a marriage to be truly collaborative and truly partners, share data, share information, share resources and it really takes that kind of collaboration to make a difference countywide. And I also want to acknowledge a very special group of people, about 50% of the person power doing child abuse prevention work in our county are people doing national service as AmeriCorps members and I'd like to ask some of those people to stand up so they can be acknowledged today. We appreciate their service, they are very dedicated and also I'd like to acknowledge and ask to stand our partners in Birth and Beyond and the most amazing team I've ever had the privilege to be involved with, my own staff at the Child Abuse Prevention Center. So it doesn't just take a village, it takes a crowd and so thanks to everyone who does this work because they do it from the heart and they do it for all the right reasons.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to get a picture first?
I don't care. However you want to do it.
No photo, it's photo op now, if you want to YouTube this or something.
It's probably worth a lot.
So we have a couple of speakers that we're going to come forward, I think, and offer some comments in light of the proclamation and so we call, is it Gloriana Jackson and Katie Ragas?
Hi, my name is Gloriana, I serve at CPS, so I work, serve with fellow social workers and we provide services for the young people. It means a lot because I was a former foster youth and I had a lot of issues, so being able to make the difference, connect with the youth for the social workers means a lot to me because I didn't have that when I was younger and because of you guys, I'm able to make that difference. So I really appreciate you and I thank you for that and with your continued support, we are able to provide quality services to the youth we serve. Thank you.
How are you?
Thank you. Good morning, my name is Katie and I'm a second term AmeriCorps member. I currently am a home visitor, serving at Valley High Family Resource Center. I would like to take this opportunity to thank the Board of Supervisors for their continuous encouragement and support for the Birth and Beyond and AmeriCorps program here in Sacramento. Because of your support, Birth and Beyond has been able to serve more families and children at risk for child abuse and neglect in our community. I was first introduced to AmeriCorps as a new mom receiving services from Birth and Beyond after having my baby spend 57 days in the NICU. I moved back to Sacramento to be near the only support I had, which was that of my mom. I was told I didn't qualify for any services here, but a social worker at UCSF discovered Birth and Beyond and said I just had to live in the service area. As I worked with my home visitor on the development of my two-month-old, I was also enrolled at City College taking early childhood education classes. I love the service that my home visitor provided and I was determined to become a home visitor and serve as an AmeriCorps member. Since enrolling in AmeriCorps, my life has forever been changed. AmeriCorps has helped develop my work abilities and skills in social work, I have also gained experience in working with families, case management and have acquired a greater knowledge of the resources in our community. While serving in AmeriCorps, my child has been enrolled in AmeriCorps Child Care Benefits Program. I also qualify for CalFresh and income-based living. The educational award has allowed me to still further my education as I am able to take classes at night. My hope is that after serving four terms and completing my education goals, I will have a vast opportunity of jobs that I will be qualified for that I wouldn't have been able to have had it not been for me being an AmeriCorps member. One of the most rewarding parts of being of service is getting to graduate families referred to me by CPS. Not only have I had the pleasure of graduating these families, but I also still get to see them as they are now involved at our Family Resource Center and not with CPS. Another reward is being able to acknowledge the little successes of the families I serve. Each term resubmit success stories about our families. What I have learned is that the most little of successes, it is the most little of successes that make the difference in the lives of the family I serve, like hearing a mom tell me she doesn't co-sleep anymore or that because of our program, she takes her child to see the doctor regularly. As I go through this journey, I too acknowledge the little successes I have had. With the support of my site, my supervisors and fellow members, I have no doubt I can achieve anything. Thank you.
Well, thank you Katie and Gloriana for speaking this morning and certainly for, I think, offering proof and certainly a strong testimony about not only your journey and what it means to be a part of AmeriCorps and to, you know, be a part of the system, but to come back and be able to give and to have your potential realized, so we offer our congratulations to you and thank you for your kind words. And I don't know, Sheila, do you have anybody else that wanted to speak or is that, okay. Well, you want to get a picture with your whole group? You got them all down here, so since it takes a crowd, why don't you get a crowd down here and we'll take a picture and you're welcome to stay if you'd like, but. Everybody in blue shirts. and I just talked to just a couple of them, we have folks from North Carolina, Illinois, from New York and they come here to our community and do their public service projects, so we again thank our AmeriCorps and certainly all of our folks, our Birth and Beyond, but thank you for coming there and hopefully some of you will call Sacramento your home in the future, so, thanks again.
Item 65 is the presentation of resolution proclaiming the week of April 17th through the 21st, 2017 as Mosquito and West Nile Virus Awareness Week in the Sacramento County.
Okay, we're just gonna wait just a moment till the chamber's kind of clear. And I would leave it to mosquito control to clear the room. That's right, that's right. Well, April's a busy month as we're finding out for child abuse prevention, certainly mosquito and west Nile awareness week and we've got Creeks Week coming up and a couple of other things, Fair Housing Month, but Gary Goodman, who is our General Manager for the Sacramento Yolo Mosquito Vector Control District is here, he's been here the last couple of years, certainly applaud your work and out of your Board and all of your employees and you're gonna have a chance to kind of go through, I think, an update on what could be a sobering subject, but I think part of the message here is that we can do a lot to prevent exposure and bring about awareness and certainly Gary and his organization in addition to the prevention and the work they do in the field, spent a lot of time educating folks about that and he's gonna help us understand better. So I have a proclamation, so why don't we go ahead and make your presentation and we're done, you're gonna be done with that and Gary, I'm gonna do the presentation to you.
Perfect, great, wonderful. Well, definitely appreciate the Board inviting me out to talk a little bit about what we're anticipating for this upcoming season. Obviously with the amount of rain that we've had, we are looking for kind of a very busy season, just the fact that we're seeing flooding almost everywhere throughout, throughout our Sacramento and Yolo County. So again, our district comprises all of Sacramento and all of Yolo County, we have our main office down in Elk Grove, we have a satellite office in Woodland that covers our Yolo County agriculture areas and for the most part, we're pretty diverse from the perspective of we have quite a bit of population that's centered right here in Sacramento and then pockets in Davis and Woodland and Knights Landing and Winters area and then we have a lot of agriculture and even the delta that surrounds that has an impact on mosquito populations as a whole than having, than having an impact on the residents that we, that we, that we house here. So for us, in terms of mosquito habitat, it's very easy for us to see certain types of habitats. So you look at agricultural areas, rice fields, wetlands, those types of things, very simple for us to spot, we can drive by that and take a look. If you drive by the causeway, you'll see a lot of water, a lot of mosquito breeding potential that happens when we have that standing water. But there are some other things that are very difficult for us to find and specifically with the recent rains that we've had and especially the one that's coming this afternoon and a little bit more in the next couple of days, what happens is all of those little cryptic containers that are in people's backyards, those small buckets, those dog dishes, those tires, those pots, all of that hold just a little bit of water and when we have this rain that comes down, it fills those things up and therefore those have the potential to breed mosquitoes. And so it's very difficult for us to be able to see kind of in people's backyards. We really rely on the public to be able to try to let us know when you're seeing a mosquito problem, when you know of a neighbor that maybe has a bad swimming pool or something like that, to give us a call so we can mobilize our folks to go out into that particular area and look more intensely in and around people's backyards because again, with just a little bit amount of rain fills up a lot of these containers and has an impact to have a really impact on, on the entire neighborhood as those mosquitoes potentially come out. So we use what we call integrated mosquito management measures, starts with public information, we have a very active advertising program, we do radio and television, print ads, we go out to a lot of neighborhood associations, a lot of fairs on the weekends, those types of things, just trying to educate the general public about what they can do to prevent mosquito breeding on their property and then of course, protect themselves from getting bitten by mosquitoes and potentially transmitting disease. Then we go into our surveillance program, we set traps throughout the district, we collect data almost on a daily basis where we're collecting traps, identifying species of mosquitoes and then testing those mosquitoes to see if they're carrying the virus, specifically west Nile virus is the one that we're most concerned with. So again, we're gathering data on a daily basis, looking at populations, trying to figure out if populations are going up, if they're going down, if they're maintaining where they should be based on historical averages and then trying to communicate that information out to the public so that they know that in their particular area, whether there's being a problem. Then we go into our biological control program. At our facility down in Elk Grove, we have 23 ponds that are dedicated towards breeding mosquito fish, very small guppy-like fish that do a very good job of eating mosquito larvae in their aquatic stage. We're probably the largest mosquito fish breeding facility in the country. We plant about 4,000 pounds of fish per year in our, in our district in Sacramento and Yolo County in areas like rice fields or wetlands, but even unmaintained backyard swimming pools where those mosquito fish can be very effective. Then we go into our physical control program, we have heavy equipment, a dump truck- We have heavy equipment at dump truck and backhoe, and we actually work with landowners specifically on trying to maintain their property so that they're not breeding mosquitoes. So we work closely with U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, California Department of Fish and Wildlife, wetland owners, all of those types of things to try to make sure that they can manage their property so that they're not creating standing water and therefore having water back up on the property and create mosquito breeding habitat. And then we get into our control component. So we have an active larvicide program. Our, over 60% of our staff is dedicated towards going out in the field and looking for mosquito breeding sources. So they're looking for those backyard swimming pools, they're looking to do service requests, they're looking at those rice fields and making sure that they're not breeding, and if they are, then treating it appropriately. But then once we get into our adult mosquito control program, once we start to see abundance of adult mosquitoes start to elevate and then also see virus activity, is when we start to implement more of our adult mosquito control measures. And so that is anywhere from backpack to truck and ATV to of course airplane applications that we've done in years past. And so again, always trying to make sure that we're educating the public on what the issues are, where our status is in terms of West Nile virus activity, and what measurements they can do to try to prevent that. So as I mentioned, West Nile virus, a few things, there are a number of diseases that mosquitoes can carry. West Nile virus is the most biggest concern that we have here in California and in Sacramento and Yolo County, but mosquitoes also transmit dengue fever, malaria, chikungunya. Zika's been in the news recently in the last couple of years, and of course dog heartworm. And this is the time where dog heartworm is being transmitted. It's the springtime. There's a particular species of mosquito that actually breeds in tree holes. So when the rain comes, it fills up those small tree holes, and there's a species of mosquito that breeds in those that transmits dog heartworm. So we want to try to make sure that people are aware to get the appropriate medication for their pets at their veterinarians. But there are a lot of diseases that mosquitoes can carry, but again, West Nile is the most largest of concern here for our particular area. And here's just a general chart of the number of confirmed human cases that we've seen of West Nile virus in California. It initially started, our big outbreak was in 2005, we had over 880 cases. It then started to tail off a little bit, and in the last couple of years, 2014 and 15 specifically approaching 800 cases. We think actually that's due a little bit to the drought, which is somewhat counterintuitive. You would think that if you have less water, you're going to have less mosquitoes, but because West Nile is a bird disease, it's carried by birds, transmitted by mosquitoes, that wherever you did have water, you had a congregation of both the birds and the mosquitoes in the same place, and we think that tended to amplify the virus, and which is why we saw that large uptick in the last couple of years. We're hoping that with the amount of water, while we may have a higher abundance this upcoming year, hopefully our virus activity will be a little bit low. But one thing I do want to try to highlight on this specifically is while you have, you know, the number of cases that are reported, West Nile virus is actually a very much underreported disease. There are a lot of times where people get sick and don't actually get it diagnosed. They don't go to the doctor, the doctor doesn't test for it, and they just suffer with the symptoms until they either recover or things get considerably worse. And so CDC estimates that for every form, or every reported neuroinvasive form of the disease, there are actually another 30 to 70 cases. So while the numbers here look to be less than 1,000, you're really talking about tens of thousands of people that have been afflicted with West Nile virus. And so again, we want to make sure that people are aware of what their specific risks are associated with that, and there's some very simple measures to try to help protect yourself. So here's just a general map of Sacramento County and the amount of virus activity that we saw last year. The red circles are positive West Nile virus mosquito samples. So these, we had over 450 mosquito samples that we collected and tested that came back positive for West Nile virus. And then the blue triangles are the number of dead birds that we tested positive for West Nile virus. So again, this is a bird disease and then transmitted by mosquitoes, but you can easily see that we have virus activity on an annual basis throughout Sacramento County. So again, the risk is very real, and we want to make sure that people are aware of that so they can try to help protect themselves. So again, what are we expecting in 2017? Well, it's a very wet winter. We have water everywhere. We are finding mosquito breeding at this moment in time, which is significantly early for us. We tend not to really see mosquito breeding until the weather starts to warm up when we really get into May and then the summer months specifically, but we're starting to see that now with just the sheer amount of water. So we definitely want to make sure that people are aware when these rains come through, if they can go through their yards and just try to dump out any standing water in their backyards so they're not contributing to the number of mosquito breeding sources that are out there. One thing I did want to touch on, invasive mosquito species, the Asian tiger mosquito and the yellow fever mosquito are mosquitoes that typically were not found in California until just a few years ago. They've started to become established here. They're typically found in Mexico, Central America, and South America, and they're starting to make their way up into the Southern United States. And specifically, there are populations that are established in Southern California, but even as close to us as Fresno and Madera. And the concern with these particular vectors or these particular mosquitoes is that they're very efficient vectors of dengue, chikungunya, and of course Zika virus.
Okay, you're sucking me in. What is chikungunya?
Chikungunya is similar to dengue fever. It means literally bent over, so very painful disease. There were over almost a million cases that were diagnosed in the Caribbean and in Central America over the last couple of years.
In the United States?
In the United States, we haven't had local transmission, but we have a lot of people actually that have traveled and then come back and exhibit those symptoms. And so that's the concern for us, because if we get these particular species of mosquitoes established here in California, then when people travel, because those are human diseases, the mosquito can pick that up from that person that's being afflicted, and then we could have local transmission. And so that's our big concern with these particular species, and that's why we want to make sure that people are aware of that. So obviously Zika virus has been in the news. We want to talk just shortly on that briefly. It was first discovered in 1947 in Uganda. Similarly, West Nile virus was discovered 10 years earlier in Uganda as well, and then started to establish, and we started to see problems in South America, in Brazil specifically. And obviously, it's been getting a tremendous amount of news because of the impacts of birth defects. You've seen the microcephaly, the babies that are born with undeveloped brains, and so therefore their heads don't develop fully, and that is the concern. While we have had cases here in California, I believe that there's been almost 20 cases in California specifically, there's no local transmission, so it's always people that have traveled and brought it back. But again, if we get the right species of mosquitoes, we could have local transmission. There has been obviously local transmission in Florida of Zika virus because there has been a tremendous number of cases that have happened there as well. So again, just a matter of an education aspect. So what are we asking the general public to do? Well, we follow what we call the seven D's. First strains to any standing water, that's where we ask the public to try to go around their yard, make sure that they're not producing mosquitoes in their own backyard. If you do have to go outside, or mosquitoes are most active around dawn and dusk, so if you can avoid being out times at those, outside at those times, that's when they're essentially looking to get that blood meal, and so that's when they're most active, and so if you can avoid that, that'd be perfect. If you can't avoid being out at dawn and dusk, dress in long sleeves and long pants to make sure that the mosquitoes can't get to your skin and bite you that way. If you can't do that, then put on a good repellent. So we offer repellent packets. We buy this stuff by the truckload, so we want people to use it. So if you have a public event, if you have an area that you would like to try to use this, all you have to do is contact our office and be more than happy to provide that free of charge. And then doors and screens should be in good working order. So I know in the summertime here in Sacramento, we like to open up the windows and the doors to get the nice delta breeze come through. Well, mosquitoes are very small, and they're picking up the carbon dioxide that you exhale. And so if you have a small hole in your doors and screen, they will find their way in. So we want to make sure that people are keeping mosquitoes outdoors. And again, the last message really, the last D for us is district personnel are here to help. So if you're being bothered by mosquitoes, if you're seeing mosquitoes, if you know of a neighbor that maybe has a bad pool, or you're seeing standing water, call the district. Typically, we have folks that are out and about in that particular area. We try to get out there the very same day, within the next couple of hours, but at the last minute would be the very next day. So we're easily there within 24 hours because we recognize the earlier that we can get there and take care of the problem, the easier time that we have for the rest of the season. And so with that, we have more information on our website at fightthebyte.net, or you can give our phone number a call, 1-800-429-1022. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. And I think again, good advice certainly and good information in that slide, and appreciate again, as we said earlier, the work of the district. So the proclamation, resolution from the board recognizes that the week of April 16th through 22nd is the designated mosquito and West Nile virus awareness week, but I think, as you said, this is an ongoing, a daily effort on behalf of the district and certainly on the community, and we need to take good advice and drain the water and take appropriate action to be, you know, aware of our surroundings and certainly to help ourselves stay healthy. So with that, we offer this for the district and your board, and thank you for your good work, and we'll see you back here this time next year.
Absolutely, you got it. Thank you. Well, here, I'll give you the repellent.
Okay, all right. Very good. Thanks a lot.
Thank you very much. I don't have anybody to say the fish.
I just definitely could do that.
Oh, I'm sure.
Put your proclamation out front. There you go. She can send you a copy. Thanks, Gary. Appreciate it.
Item 66 is the Presentation of Resolution celebrating National Healthcare Decisions Week.
And I think we have. Harpal? Is here? Oh, there she is. Okay, very good. Good morning. How are you today?
Doing well, thank you.
Good, good, good. Well, as I said, this is a busy month and certainly a busy morning, but, and pronounce her name, is Harpal?
Harpal.
Aluka?
Alek.
Alek, okay. Harpal Alek, representing, are you with Snowline?
Snowline Hospice.
Snowline Hospice. And I know that one of her colleagues actually lives in District 5 and had contacted me regarding this, but I think this goes certainly beyond supervisors district and beyond this county and applies not just statewide but nationally to encourage folks to, as we've heard about other aspects of a healthy community, that for folks to have some advanced planning as relates to their own health situation, and to spend the time with their family, with their health professionals, with, you know, legal advisors if necessary, to really, I think, make provisions that they want for their care as they progress through life, and it doesn't mean end of life necessarily, but that they be clear about how they, you know, wish to be attended to and whether it be in their own home setting or in a facility where care is maybe a higher level or more acute. But basically to encourage folks to take the time and to do it in a fashion that again comports with their own personal beliefs, with their own thoughts about how they want to be cared for, but also, you know, with their close loved ones, whether they're family or friends or spouses or other significant members of their family. And so we want to recognize that, you know, throughout California, folks, you know, are putting forth the effort to encourage people during this week, but also I think throughout their lifetime to be cognizant of that, because I think the percentage, as I recall, is about 23%, you know, less than a quarter folks have given directives in a way that certainly has the force of law behind it, but hopefully expresses their wishes and is honored by those who then are care providers in whatever setting they happen to be in. And so this week really highlights, certainly in this community, and we want to thank again Snowline Hospice, but many others, you know, healthcare providers for their, certainly their ongoing work to provide level care in lots of different respects, but also to recognize that it's important to individuals but to a healthy community for folks to, you know, to take the time to plan, people of all ages and certainly from all walks of life, to consult with one another, to consult with professionals, and to hopefully make informed and advanced decisions regarding their future healthcare needs and matters that are of a personal nature but certainly affect them and the broader community. So with that, I'm pleased to present this to you, and maybe allow you, Harpal, to make a few comments if you'd like. And again, we recognize April 16th through 22nd is not just, we're not just doing mosquitoes, we're dealing with healthcare decisions, and we encourage folks to participate in a way that's of particular concern and certainly of interest to them, and this is again, an ongoing effort to advocate, so anyway, thanks, Harpal.
Thank you very much. We know that end of life and serious illness is a difficult topic to talk about, so Snowline Hospice appreciates that the board is willing to read the resolution, the proclamation, and help shed light on an issue that we don't like to talk about in this community or this entire society. So thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks, Harpal.
Item 67, Presentation of Resolution Recognizing Fair Housing Month in Sacramento County, April 2017.
Okay. Mr. Foley. Morning, John. Good to see you.
This is Lex Powell, is the new staff attorney for Project Sentinel.
Oh, hi, Lex. Good to see you. Very good. Well, we have two gentlemen here this morning to receive the resolution, and certainly John is a familiar face, Mr. Foley, who Sacramento self-help housing, but has been in these chambers on many occasions, certainly advocating for, you know, a good, not only affordable housing, but the good situations for folks, and we appreciate your advocacy and certainly your work both professionally, but also I know it's of deep concern to you and to many others who work in that. And I think we focus on, again, April being a very active month is fair housing, and that takes many different forms, but certainly recognizing that from, you know, the federal government or through our state government, our local governments, that we all have a role and responsibility governmentally, but also individually and collectively to see to that folks are afforded opportunities to seek out and make housing choices without being discriminated against, without biases that can be built in oftentimes to housing decisions. And so this really is an opportunity to focus in on how important housing is to all of us, whatever, again, our walk in life, but secondly, that the opportunities that we, I think, hold very dear as a community and society, that folks have the, you know, ability to move about freely in our country and certainly our community, but also to then do decide where it is they want to live as relates to lifestyles, to certainly to proximity to schools, to jobs, to healthcare, whatever it might be. And that is a part of that, then they be afforded that opportunity in a way that reflects either their ability to pay, so to speak, but certainly to, you know, be recognized that everyone should be afforded that, and there should be, you know, we don't want biases, certainly in the workplace, but in the housing and in our community. And so the focus is to help educate, again, bring attention to this, and people might just assume that, not with Fair Housing Month, but with fair housing, that that's a given, but I think we know intuitively that there are situations that occur, and that we have channels for dealing with complaints and concerns, but also that if as a community we make positive statements about that, that it helps reinforce the work that John, Lex, and others do in this community, but certainly throughout our state and our nation, to assure that folks have, you know, safe, accessible housing, and that it's done in a way that doesn't preclude them because of some particular situation and/or, you know, whatever it may be, that it is fair and that's available to folks, whatever their circumstances. And so we want to encourage that and continue to reaffirm that. And on behalf of the board supervisors proclaim Fair Housing Month, April 2017, and join with communities throughout the state and the nation in recognizing the role that we certainly as governmental entities and our nonprofit and our partners in the private sector, but also working together that we can have a good, strong community that has housing available to people from all walks of life. So with that, John, I'm pleased to present this to you.
Thank you very much.
You bet.
Thank you.
You bet. I'll let you offer some comments if you'd like.
Sure. Thank you. Members of the board, thank you for this. The county has taken the lead here in Sacramento in reestablishing a place to call if you're a tenant and having trouble. After the dissolution of the commission, you set us up to do a renters' helpline, which I happen to, I brought the card, so I'd be sure to remember the number today. It's 389-7877. We get hundreds of calls every month from the unincorporated county, also calls from the cities that are within the county. After your leadership, the other communities, the incorporated cities also joined and became part of this helpline effort. We contract with Project Sentinel. Lex is here as a staff, new staff attorney for Project Sentinel, who investigate. About 10% of the calls that we get end up looking suspicious, and we hand those on to Project Sentinel to take a look at, and a number of those end up being serious issues that need to be dealt with. Last year, there was one case with a property management company, well-known property management company, should've known better, that was really discriminating against families with children, not who you'd expect them to discriminate against, but they were, and they ended up having to pay $440,000 in damages because of their actions. You know, it's a serious effort to help people. Given the tightness of our rental market, tenants are very vulnerable. It's very difficult to relocate. There's a lot of pressure to maintain your housing even in a bad situation, and we are honored to be the people, the place that people can go to when they're having trouble. We work with Birth and Beyond, a number of other entities, some of which were here earlier today, to try and identify problem landlords, problem apartment buildings. We work closely with your code enforcement folks, and it's tough out there, but it's good work, and appreciate your naming the month as Fair Housing Month for us to really honor that. We'll have a lot of trainings particularly for landlords later this month and on in the next month. the next month, and you might have, you know, other people that you know that need to get trained. We're happy to have them come. Those trainings will be run by Project Sentinel staff and Rental Housing Association staff. So, thank you again. And Lex, do you want to say a couple words?
Sure. I just want to thank the board for the attention that they've paid to this issue. As we approach the fiftieth anniversary of the Fair Housing Act, next year, it's now perhaps more than ever important to communicate our commitment to giving people a fair opportunity to live and prosper in the community, and I think that this resolution shows that the board supervisors really appreciates that, and we, Project Sentinel, we naturally thank you for that. I thank you for that. I look forward to working with you, and yeah, I really appreciate everything that you've done to support fair housing in this community. Thank you.
I want to give that number again, John.
Yeah, renter's helpline is three eight nine seven eight seven seven.
And John, you know, the good work that Sacramento self-help housing does doesn't happen just from the funding from the county and the cities, it also happens from the generosity of the community. So, you have anything going on on July thirteenth that we should know about, are the people watching on Channel fourteen?
Yes, we have Let Them Eat Cake, our annual event. If you want to bring a cake, you get in free, otherwise buy a ticket. We'll have over at Beatnik Studios this year. Be a great event that evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, do you want to get a photo?
Yeah.
Okay. Is that all that you hold there?
Yeah, let's hold it.
So, off our proclamation.
Thanks very much.
Applaud you for your work. Thank you so much. And thank you, Kate, for taking the photo. So, as I said, our planning department here is certainly a part of fair housing piece of it, so thank you, Leanne and Kate, for being here.
Item sixty-eight, presentation of resolution proclaiming the week of April twenty-first through the twenty-ninth, two thousand seventeen, as Creek Week in Sacramento County.
Okay, another annual event, and we got, what? We got, oh, we got to have that. Oh, she will? Okay. Okay, you're gonna do it? Go ahead, and then we'll do this after us?
Okay. Real quick. Chair Natoli, members of the board, I'm Dana Booth. I am the Department of Water Resources Stormwater Quality Program Manager, and we're here today to recognize the importance of our creeks and the people who love and maintain them. This is the twenty-seventh year that the Sacramento Area Creeks Council has partnered with our county to do Creek Week. Creek Week is an opportunity to encourage people, our residents, to keep our creeks clean, and it raises public awareness with regards to pollution prevention and just the benefits that our creeks provide. Last year, throughout the year, our drainage maintenance crews were able to remove trash and debris throughout our creeks, and just during the timeframe of the Creek Week event last year, over sixteen hundred volunteers removed roughly sixteen tons of trash from our creeks. So, in order to tell you more about this year's Creek Week, I'd like to introduce Alta Tura. She is the president of the Sacramento Area Creeks Council. Thank you.
Thanks, Lisa. Good morning. President forever, I think, so. Not forever, a while. So, thank you very much. We so greatly appreciate the support that the county provides for Creek Week and the partnership that we've formed over the years, and I just want to say a few words about the event. We would like volunteers to register online, that's the easiest way, and they go to creekweek.net. We still have quite a few locations where we need volunteers. Lot of our cleanup sites, they, they're full. So, the ones that are not yet full, those are the creeks that need some love, and we hate to disappoint people. People like to go the same spot every year, but we have some other problem areas that need attention. So, creekweek.net is the place to go to volunteer, to register. And we have a lot of garbage in the creeks because of the storms, the high water events, and so, Upper Arcade Creek, there's a lot more trash than usual that's been washed down the creek and gotten trapped up higher on the banks, and so, we've got plenty of cleanup opportunities there. We have Antelope creeks that are more civilized, and that's a good place to take younger children, but again, the need isn't as great there in Antelope. And then, down at the Bufferlands, there's a lot, that's at the lower end of Laguna and Morrison creeks, and there is so much garbage there of all different types and sizes. People that want to come out and really make a difference, that's a great spot to volunteer at. I wanted to mention that we have mosquito repellent wipes for all of our volunteers that have been supplied by the Vector Control District, another one of our partners, and we appreciate that. And I wanted to also mention, we have goodie bags for the supervisors, and those will be passed out to you later. One of our new features this year is we're trying to do, get more citizen scientists involved in the event. So, this year, we're trying something new that we hope we can develop. It's being piloted this year, but we're going to have certain sites with science-oriented volunteers helping us. Some of the garbage that's collected, we're going to categorize it and enter data into a database, and we want to see how this works. We think we can be of more help to the county and the other jurisdictions in characterizing the garbage that we're pulling out. Maybe it will help in prevention, because it would be better if it never got there in the creek in the first place, and it will just provide more information to help the county figure out how to deal with this seemingly perpetual problem that we have of garbage in our waterways. So, did I forget anything? Okay, I think I covered everything, and my number is four five four, four five four four. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your work.
Sure.
Well, thanks, Alta. And Dana, you want to join us, and anyone else here? Yes, please. Okay. And just would note, I see Matt Robinson is going to be taking this photo, so.
Get the girls in the middle.
Yeah, so.
Oh, wait a minute. Well. Want to show the T-shirt?
And just before I leave the podium here, I just would say that, again, this is an ongoing effort, and as Dana pointed out, it's the twenty-seventh annual, but this work goes on in our community, certainly with the organization of volunteers that come together to make a difference, to focus on this particular week in April, but I think we encourage folks, as Alta said, to, you know, be cognizant of, you know, how they dispose of things, how they place things, that particularly in the winter when you have high waters. I don't think some of the stuff that got into creeks was necessarily intended to get there, but it's there, and now we have the focus on the cleanup. And I guess I would just note too, that having done the presentation this morning, that you can see there's not something going on in this community all the time, twenty-four seven, where you can put, channel your positive energy and efforts, and certainly this is one that has throughout the course of a week, activities and has a focus around, obviously, you know, the Saturday, the twenty-ninth, and big celebration at Carmichael Park with environmental displays, and certainly a recognition of all the volunteers and a barbecue as Alta pointed out. But it really is a great activity, and, you know, many tons of debris is retrieved from our creeks and streams, and it benefits certainly all of us, and certainly the critters that reside in those areas and helps keep our community clean. So, we thank you so much and appreciate every year bringing the goodie bag in for the board and certainly thank our professional staff for their work too, and good partners out there.
Yes, great. Thank you. I did forget, I was concentrating on the cleanup, but yeah, we do have events throughout the week, and you can find out about those on creekweek.net also. So, thanks for reminding.
Creekweek.net. Right, okay, good, very good. Good, good. Thanks again, appreciate it.
Thanks.
Okay, anything else?
No more presentations.
Okay, good, all right, good. Thank you all for your patience. Okay, then we'll return to our consent calendar. I see we have a couple of speakers that have signed up on one of the items, and I think we have some board members that wanted to speak to items, so let's go ahead and call the consent calendar and note any continuances, and then we'll go to board members and audience for comments.
Okay, so for the balance of the consents, we're looking at items one through fifty-one. For my notes, item number five, you are adopting an ordinance. You are adopting an ordinance amending various sections of the Sacramento County Code and authorizing the Department of Personnel Services to process a salary resolution amendment. You waived reading on this on March twenty-first. You are also introducing an ordinance for item twenty-nine, amending chapters four point zero six and four point oh seven of the Sacramento County Code related to general business license and tobacco retailer licensing, and waiving full reading and continuing to April twenty-fifth for adoption. You are also adopting another ordinance for item forty-five, amending Title Nine, Chapter nine point three six of the Sacramento County Code relating to consumption of alcoholic beverages, use of motorized bicycles and vehicles on the bike trails, and games permitted in regional parks. You waived reading on this on March twenty-first. And that concludes my notes for your consent matters, and again, we are looking at the balance items one through fifty-one.
Okay, thanks. I know we have speakers on item forty, so we'll hold those out, but let us go to colleagues who have our other items, the policy consent calendar as well, so I know, Mr. Kennedy?
Yeah, I just have a question. I don't need anything removed. Staff can probably just answer. Actually, this is the first one, it's item sixteen, if you want to read that.
Item sixteen, authority to amend and increase fiscal year sixteen seventeen expenditure contract with Medmark Treatment Centers Incorporated by three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the provision of medication-assisted treatment services.
Thank you. This is one, Nav, you and I spoke about yesterday, that, you know, I support the work that they're doing, it's important work, but at the same time, I hope that we look at when we're going, when we're doing these agreements with organizations like Medmark, and there's others like them, I'm not just picking on them, that we're also looking at neighborhood impacts and putting into these agreements wherever possible and wherever legal, you know, good neighbor policies and that type of thing. I don't want to stop these at all by any means, but just to make sure that they're aware that there are impacts if they're not well managed.
Correct. We'll do that.
Great, thank you. And number fifty-one.
Okay. Item fifty-one is the First Amendment to Agreement for Legal Services with Stradling, Yoka, Carlson, and Roth, P.C., for legal services and consultation for real estate due diligence matters related to the expansion of Rio Consumerist Correctional Center under SB ten twenty-two.
And again, just have a question about whether or not, I know that we had decided to put off really having the robust conversation regarding this till the budget and making it part of the budget. This is a small amount of money, so I don't have a great deal of heartburn over it, but is, are we doing this instead of putting it off till June because it's a legal requirement by the state, I would assume?
There is a legal requirement. What we found in working with county council is that there is a retro amount that we owe this firm, so this will true that up, and also, if we proceed with it, any kind of title work that's needed now be included, but there is no work being done at this point until we make a decision in June.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, good. Just I would note on item sixteen, I too had raised a question about this, and I think that, not that the title is misleading, but, I mean, my reaction was, you got to go back to the background to really know what this is. It's a little vague, that, you know, basically it's for methadone dosing. It talks, you know, kind of generally about some counseling services, but basically you're buying methadone slots, and that's what we're, and that's what we're doing here, and, you know, again, obviously, it's, you know, one of many ways to address or a number of ways to address, you know, opioid addiction, but we need to be clear about that. But I would just say that to Supervisor Kennedy's point, that when it comes to, you know, whether they be fixed clinic locations and/or mobile operations, that not just having a good neighbor policy, but I think that, you know, there needs to be some oversight. I can assure, you know, folks here today that this has been nothing less than controversial in some cases over the years, get some providers do a better job of, you know, not only policing the surrounding area in the sense that, you know, they conduct their business in a way that is neighborhood friendly, but secondly, that they follow the strict guidelines for dispensing, and I will, I guess the question I wanted to raise though, where we saw some problems, and again, I think Supervisor Kennedy probably could speak to this better than I, is where they were allowed to dispense multiple dosing for folks to take away, and then that became a street barter item and versus having the single doses where they come in and they get their, you know, their dosing each day, and so, again, without drilling too deep into weeds here, I think that that needs to be clear that, you know, the protocols, you know, they are state guidelines, we don't oversee this, but again, we are basically transferring, you know, Medi-Cal monies for this particular treatment and assisting folks. And again, I don't know, Patrick, I know that we had a couple of situations certainly in, you know, in District Two, but it could be anywhere where when they did multiple doses and they were, you know, again, those operations were pursued both by District Attorney, and I think we had, you know, some of our Health Department officials involved as well. But that needs to be clear. I mean, that's, you know, that's not a, whether that's a central business practice or not, I think that lends itself to other, to other issues, and so I guess, you know, we have this contract, it's not focusing on Medmark as much as it is generally, and I think that I want to be sure that was noted for the record, so. Okay, all right. Anything else? Patrick? Okay, all right. Supervisor Peters?
As I mentioned before, recusing on item thirty-five due to economic conflict of interest, and then on item thirty-eight, which is the NARS sedimentation project where we're rejecting all bids, I'm, does anyone from the staff have any sense of why the county bid was, or not bid, but estimate was so far off from reality?
I can follow up and have a detailed answer for you.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, they're not usually, so, but this was, you know, double the bid, the bid was double.
If we can hold it till two PM and we'll come back at that point.
That's not necessary, I just, I'd just like to know the answer.
Yes, I think send a memo out to board members, certainly Supervisor Peters to answer her question, but make sure all board members get that, so.
Okay.
Okay, good. Okay, so we just note that on item thirty-five as well, that will be a recusal on that. Okay, Supervisor Frost? Okay. All right, I did have a couple of items. Just on item five, which is the salary resolution amendment and changes in Department of Personal Services, I wanted to correct the staff report that in the course of those discussions we talked about, and I know that they're looking at potentially renaming animal care and regulation, this references as animal care and regulations, that is not the title, it's regulation of it, and, but hopefully it won't be that title very long, it'll be something else. I know you're working, I guess you've got an effort going, I see Dave's here too.
Yeah, what we are engaging is the department and our stakeholders and find out what name would they like, and then come back to the board with a change to our.
Something like animal care services or animal care support, but anyway, you'll.
We want them to give us some ideas.
All right, good, all right, very good, so, okay. And then on item fifteen, I know the board's briefed on this, if you could call that item, please.
Item fifteen, retroactive authority to amend and increase to fiscal year sixteen seventeen contracts with Crestwood Behavior Health Incorporated by a total amount of four hundred and fifty-two thousand nine hundred and fifty-two dollars for the provision of adult inpatient psychiatric services.
Okay, and again, I think it's pretty clearly outlined here, I'm supportive of taking the action, obviously, these are important services, but I think for the record, again, calling out what's on page three relative to the authorities, both departmentally but certainly under the county executive and the board of supervisors, that there was certainly under the county executive and the Board of Supervisors, that there was a budget approval given to this that would, that had presumed an increase in the, in the rate. That was exceeded, and it was done in October, and here we are in April where we're looking back on this. But I would just say that there needs to be clear understanding about where that authority rests relative to authorizing increases in contractual reimbursements and/or payments for services rendered, and it just, you know, again, it could be this department or any department, but I think it needs to be clear that, you know, that's a, that's a step, mistakes can be made, so I understand that, but, you know, whether it's the DHHS, or DHA, or municipal services, or internal administration, whatever it is, if there are contracts, and particularly when they had a previous board approval in May of last year, and then something different was done in excess of that, significantly in excess, and obviously, that's nearly half a million dollars here. So, again, I think it's outlined in the staff report, but I know you briefed us on that, and I, again, I understand why it happened, but I think it needs to be clear that those authorities are retained here. Ultimately, we're the ones that have to make those budget decisions, and if, if we're really in a crunch, then this could be a significant hit on program and services going forward, so. Okay, so thanks. Lastly, I would just, if you could call item 45, please. You mentioned that was an ordinance.
Item 45, adopt ordinance amending Title IX, Chapter 9.36 of the Sacramento County Code. This is relating to the consumption of alcoholic beverages, use of motorized bicycles and vehicles on the bike trails, and games permitted in regional parks.
Okay. Did this go before the Parks Commission? And the reason for my question is that we've got two responses, I know this was up on the county website, and I'm going to read into the record comments that we were, at least acknowledged in the summary, comments we received from a couple of parties, one in Ranch Cordova and one in Carmichael relative to their concerns about how this more universally applies, understanding you're trying to get to a particular problem here, but that it does have other spinoff effects to people who are legitimate users of the Parkway. And so, I guess, Jeff, maybe you can just take a moment, and, you know, we know what some of the issues are relative to alcohol consumption and so forth, but there's concern expressed by folks, I think, that are, you know, again, users of the Parkway who respect that, but also think this is going to be a bit overarching, so I wanted to.
Sure. To answer the question, yes, it did go before the Parks Commission. We are working our way through these ordinances in 2016, took it to the RPAC, the American River Parkway Advisory Committee, as well as the Recreation and Park Commission for their review and comment.
Okay, I don't know, did you see the comments that came in, these were circulated to the board?
I have not.
Okay. One from a person in Ranch Cordova who says, "The current ban on alcohol on American River Parkway on major holiday weekends combined with the massive policing has already accomplished said goal of public safety, and this person believes there's no further police empowerment is necessary. Less than half the number of river participants are interested in being on the water during the alcohol ban, while doubled in the officers on the water and patrolling the banks." In addition, it says, "The massive county jet boats racing needlessly up and down the river make it dangerous for less skilled canoeists, kayakers, and swimmers. The sheriff boats are not as bad as the fire department." Clearly, the muscle, and this is their words, "Clearly, the muscleheads in the fire department have never been in a canoe, let alone attempting to keep one upright in the wake of a jet boat. These boats are not appropriate or necessary for a small river and should be banned." And so, I wanted to call it attention, not so much publicly, as just to acknowledge that we depend upon our fire and rescue personnel to keep it safe for all users, but I, again, this is someone who is a property owner and a resident along the river who was concerned that, you know, there's a balance there that needs to be achieved. The other comment was from a person who was lifelong resident of Carmichael, they say, "I strongly urge the board to reconsider this ordinance. This law will make fishing along the rivers adjuvably cold adult beverages an offense. Nearly every stretch of the shoreline is only accessible through nature trails." And the person says, "I'm not sure what the goal of the ordinance is, and I don't think the law is targeted towards anglers and beach picnickers," but clearly, they, we are affected by it. So was there any thought as to how it affects folks?
Yeah, the ordinance and the change in the alcohol ordinance only applies to the days when we're restricting alcohol, so it doesn't apply at any other days other than our designated alcohol restriction days. And what we're trying to do is essentially marry the county ordinance with the state prohibition on the waterways, so that when we do restrict alcohol, people can't bring it into the parks, where currently, what one could do is they could bring alcohol into the parks, as long as it's in a closed container, and then take it out onto the river. And that's problematic from an enforcement perspective, so this isn't targeted in any way other than those days where we do restrict alcohol.
Okay, well, maybe that you can get a copy of these, Jeff.
Sure, we'd be happy to respond.
If you feel appropriate, certainly respond to folks, and I think, you know, again, I certainly want to commend the effort, because I know it can get a bit dicey even for law enforcement and rescue personnel, and they're trying to save lives, keep things safe out there. But apparently, there is some concern, I guess, amongst those who may use it for canoeing, kayaking, and so forth, in addition to those that may be rafting, so.
Happy to do that.
Thanks. And Madam, if we could just, again, I'm done with that, but I'll go back to item 29, I did want to raise one. And you read that as an ordinance introduction as well.
Item 29 is the ordinance amending chapters 4.06 and 4.07 of the Sacramento County Code related to general business licenses and tobacco retailer licenses.
Okay, and I mentioned this in my briefing yesterday with Mr. Gill, and I don't know whether that got incorporated into, into thinking here, but my point being is that we've had some hearings before this board in recent years, probably, you know, two or three, where I think, again, recognizing that there had been sale to minors, of course, that age now is going to 21 for sale of tobacco products, and it covers even a broader realm of product and materials. But the ability for this board to exercise discretion, because apparently the ordinance calls out, it is a, you know, mandatory, and the ordinance is 30-day suspension, what we've tried to do is certainly is to recognize that, you know, all, you know, all in one month can be, you know, a pretty dramatic impact to the businesses, whom otherwise have never had offenses, the last one we had, gentleman had been in business for a dozen or more years, and had had a clean record, had an employee who obviously messed up and messed up badly, and needed to be held accountable. So I guess while we're looking at this ordinance, and we're introducing this version, but whether there was any thought into that, I didn't have that chance to parse this to that level of detail now, so maybe you find it there, where we have a little more latitude as a board to exercise based upon the circumstance and what's presented to us, otherwise, it's just pretty cut and dried, and when it comes on appeal, we're given really no ability to, if we make a finding that it happened, 30 days is 30 days.
We are going to look into that. I don't have what the exact language will be, but I want to work with finance and county council's office, what options do we have in making changes to the ordinance, then come back to the board.
Yeah, I just need to get, to allow some discretion with this board, there maybe need to be some mandatory impact, and, you know, but, you know, currently calls for a 30-day suspension, and really, with no ability for this board to do anything but that, unless we were to find that it didn't happen, well, that's not the factual information before us in all the cases I recall. It happened, they admit that it happened, they offer an explanation, doesn't excuse that they sold to a minor, and you want to make it clear that there's a penalty if that occurs, but, but there's, you know, I think there needs to be some ability for this board, whoever's sitting here, working with our staff, to, you know, decide, you know, if 30 days seems a bit harsh, could it be 15, or could it be something else, but, or maybe it's more than that, you know, so at any rate.
We'll look into it.
So if we're going to introduce this, though, then could this be held for a week or two to look at that, so we could have that for consideration? I know we have to change it to the age 21 because of the changes in the law, but.
If we could go ahead and introduce this one, I want to spend some time making sure there's nothing else in the existing ordinance that we want to change. We know 30 days is an issue, but I would like to do a much more thorough review and then report back with changes to it.
Okay. All right, so we're going to take this up, and then you'll come back with something subsequent for our consideration. Okay, all right, that's all I had. Now, we've got people that speak on item 40, so we'll call that item, please.
Item 40 is the countywide sidewalk improvements, Phase 1, award of bid to FBD Vanguard Construction. The environmental document is an EIR for Sacramento County Pedestrian Master Plan.
With that, then, we'll have staff stand by for this. I have Karen Klinger and Patricia Towne have signed up, so either order, whoever wants to come first, come on up and. Good morning, Karen.
Good morning. Karen Klinger talking about the sidewalks on Eastern Avenue, and I'm mostly concerned about, well, traffic is horrendous there, but the maps that they've provided actually are not correct. And I think when they do a map, it's always very good. If they have some designation at the bottom to show if it's Fair Oaks Boulevard, or where the mark would be, how far down, where they are on the map as far as the street, some designation. Your map, their map is bad. Do something where you have streets, so people have a clue where they're at. The map that they've provided extends north beyond Castick. It goes to Puente, and the way this is designed, I need to give you something that shows streets. So there needs to be clarity, great clarity, because there are two houses between Castick and Puente, and my guess is they're trying to get to the Frontage Road, but in the meantime, we've got two houses that are showing within the boundaries of their map. And then, you may have had some calls, Ms. Peters, Supervisor Peters, because of my map and the one Trish is going to, Towne is going to be talking about, because they're very misleading when you have a map that shows from LaSalle all the way down, that would include that whole loop of LaSalle. So I don't know how we get correction on that, but these maps cannot exist the way they are, because it shows properties that are not designated in this phase. And I think what's very important is to provide neighbors with a phase of which and when the projects for the sidewalks on Eastern are going to go. Because now you still have a home on Entrada to the south, is Bill's property going to have a sidewalk, since this is a sidewalk project at Entrada? And then we're going to have a span from Los El Court all the way to Entrada, where you won't, one small portion is a sidewalk, but then you have probably four houses or whatever without sidewalks. We need something that's going to show when those sidewalks will be. Because the two people, the one on Entrada and the one on LaSalle, they've already been paid, they were threatened, one was threatened with eminent domain if they didn't sell. I think this is unconscionable, and there's certainly a much better way to handle something like that than to be threatened with eminent domain. If he didn't sell, they would take it by eminent domain. So I obviously can't find fault with you, but I do find fault with staff, because they are the ones that have made the errors in the maps, and we need a map that shows the exact project. Thank you so much.
Okay, thanks, Karen. I trust we can get, maps are specific to the locations, these are vicinity maps that have these red boxes, and that's as much detail, maybe Supervisor Peters got it more detailed, but if not, then I think the point's well made, that it's in the vicinity of, and that's.
If I could make a comment, please?
Sure, you bet, yeah.
I agree the maps are poor. Also, the description in the overview lists a different street than the project location listed on the map, so not crazy about that. It is an area, and Karen, I did not receive any calls from anyone in Arden Park about this project, but it is in response to several neighbors who have wanted a piece of sidewalk there to connect all the sidewalk that full length. So I think you had the general reasoning correct, it just, we didn't do a very good job of explaining it in the staff report.
I might add, in speaking with Dan Schuman of Department of Transportation just now, there is a plan following any board action today to reach out to the homeowners in the project areas, and then also, Dan, could certainly respond to any questions that the speakers have.
I think we did respond. Your next speaker would be.
Okay, all right. Patricia?
Good morning. Good morning. My name is Patricia Towne, and basically, it is in response to the map that was sent to me. On the eastern side by LaSalle, it shows that it goes from Deep Park all the way down to the south end of LaSalle, which would go past 1057 LaSalle and on down eastern. My husband and I want to do some improvements. We've been to the county, the city, and basically, we can't do those improvements until the county decides if, in a different pace, are they going to continue that sidewalk? So I need some clarity as to when that sidewalk may continue, or if these maps are incorrect.
I'd like to have DOT come up and explain the map, where the sidewalk's going, please? Thank you. And then perhaps, Dan, you can give her your card, so she can be contacted later. I'm not sure what your reference to the city is, because this isn't city property, but if you have a problem with building on your property having to do with the sidewalk, Mr. Schuman could talk to you outside about it.
No, I'm having a problem rebuilding a garage should I want to, which is in desperate need of doing so. And when I go to the county offices that are located in the city, they direct me to go out to, what is it, not gold circle, but anyway, I've been to two or three different offices trying to get clarity.
Okay, so that's, you're looking for a building permit for your garage? This isn't, that comment is not related to this sidewalk question?
It is regarded, because should this sidewalk want to continue, I can't build it where it is. I'm being told that the setbacks for the garage wouldn't be far enough should you continue that sidewalk. As this map states in your, in your plans, it goes past my house and three other houses on Eastern.
That's the intent?
Pardon me?
That is the intent, to complete the sidewalk?
Well, if that is the intent, then I need a lot more clarity where I can.
That's why I'm suggesting you talk to Mr. Schuman outside.
We can provide that to you in terms of both, and if there's any work that you'd like to coordinate with the construction of our work, we can, we can handle that with the contractor when we start the work, so I can.
Does this not show that it goes to the south end on LaSalle?
I don't have enough detail, but I can certainly get with you after this.
Mr. Antonio, I think what we can do is have Dan work with constituent on.
We missed Towne, yeah, okay, that's good, and certainly keep Supervisor Peters off.
And we will report.
Anything they'd like to coordinate during construction, we can, we can address that, as well as, I can get information on the future, or any future plans for infill in that same location that might affect.
Okay, tell me where the sidewalk's going, from where to where?
I don't have this, it's generally LaSalle to Entrada.
Yeah, I'm looking at it on a map here, yeah. Okay. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
And then, please give your card to the constituent, so she can talk to you outside about her needs. Thank you.
Good, and note on this that, you know, maps need to be more clear. I mean, this is not the first, this is not the first, and certainly not the last sidewalk project, so if we're going to see this, and again, you know, there are different areas of the county, but I think that, you know, rather than just a vicinity map, that may be sufficient for discussion purposes, but for purposes of constituents that we're working with, I think it's important to have maps that show in different areas of the county, so in the future, that would be very, very useful and helpful to have that. All right, Ms. Towne, we'll have Mr. Schuman get in contact with you, and hopefully help sort that out, so. Thanks for being here. All right. If I could, one, one final question, I just, I wanted to ask on item six, I know in my briefing, could we read that?
Item six is authorize the elimination and write-off of fees associated with the care of detained youth, juvenile services, and delinquency proceedings.
Okay. My question is just on, and I see Connie's here in the audience, but we're, basically, you're going to write off, in some cases, debt that goes back almost 40 years that's being held, that's being collectible. Is there, was there any additional budgetary impact? I understand the policy relationship to this and why this is being recommended going forward, but that's probably one of the biggest write-offs we've ever, ever done. I mean, I assume that this was thoroughly vetted, not just, both with our lawyers, but certainly with, with other executive staff.
And probation department, too.
Oh, yeah, and public defender and such, but, so these are being carried currently as, as potentially collectible, and with this action, we wipe all that, we wipe all that off the books?
Correct.
Connie, maybe you could just, again, if it's been hanging around for 40 years, we're probably not going to collect on it, I get that, but.
Connie, I'm the Director of Revenue Recovery. Hello, good morning. Yes, we've carried these on our books for quite a while. A lot of the financial situations, as explained in the item, of the individuals involved, they're not able to pay the amounts in full, they make small payments, they may have irregular payments over a number of years, and so the amount collected of the amount of receivables has been running at about 10%, 15%. So it is a very, very small amount of what is incurred.
Is it normal that we carry, is there no statute, though, that runs, when, some of these are almost 45 years. of these are almost 45 years, as I think I saw they went back to 1974. Is there no statute? I mean, you know, obviously, if a person dies, you can't collect it, I guess, but so, is there a framework, not just for this particular category, which is significant, but I'm curious.
Yes, yes, there is. And so these accounts are open book accounts. And so as an open book account, the statute limitations is four years from the date of the last charge.
How much?
Four years.
Four years, okay.
From the date of the last charge, or the date of the last payment. And so, again, many of these cases, the case spans over a long period of time. The accounts with our office, one account may contain charges for a parent, for example, as well as, that are related to the juvenile. And so the parent may have a number of court fines, they may have another, a number of other county debts. And so all those amounts on their account affect the statute limitations. And so if we have these charges on the books, the parent incurs a traffic citation, for example, then the payments on the account continue to hold the statute limitations on all these other older charges.
So if we had someone in the juvenile justice system back in 1974, they obviously were younger than 18, and, you know, some 43 years later, they're now 61 years old, and they're still in our system.
In that particular case, it was a family who had a lot of contact with the court system over the duration of their lives.
Do they get notice that this gets wiped off? Or do they, you know, they just, it sounds like they're still in the system, though, right?
Yes.
For some other reason, so this one goes off, but they've got other things that are still pending?
Correct.
Do you have many like that, or is that the anomaly?
Oh, no, no, we have quite a few like that.
That you carry for decades?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks, Connie.
You're welcome.
All right. That's all I have. Okay, then a motion would be in order, if there's no further questions, if no one else signs to speak, and we do know Supervisor Peters recusing herself on item 35, and so we have a motion?
Move consent.
Okay. Okay, move in second to approve the consent calendar, with the exception of the items that were already taken off consent to the resolutions. And with that, if nothing further, please vote.
Unanimous vote, and this is for items one through 51, with a recusal on item 35 from Supervisor Peters.
Okay, very good. Okay. Next item, please.
Next. Item 69 is the fiscal year 2017-18 five-year capital improvement plan, technology improvement plan review, and referral to the County Planning Commission for project consistency with the general plan.
All right, good morning, Ms. Ferguson.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I'm Britt Ferguson, the county's Chief Financial Officer. And before you today, we have the five-year capital improvement plan, technology improvement plan for fiscal years 2017-18 through fiscal year 21-22. This year's five-year CIP includes 319 projects, with proposed funding of approximately $1,299,000. Overseen by seven departments, airports, general services, technology, regional parks, transportation, waste management and recycling, and water resources. The CIP also includes needed projects that are currently unfunded for the Departments of General Services, Technology, and Regional Parks. There are a total of 107 projects that will require funding in order to move forward. Many of the unfunded projects are not currently scoped, and a cost estimate has not been determined. For those projects that have been reviewed for cost estimates, approximately $139.4 million would be needed. Upon your approval today, the County Executive's Office will forward the CIP to the Planning Commission for Review of the Projects for Consistency with the County's General Plan. The CIP will then be brought back to the Board for approval as part of the fiscal year 2017-18 recommended budget. Representatives from each of the departments are here to highlight projects within their portion of the CIP, and to answer any questions you may have. We will begin with the airports department, and then move from there to general services, the Department of Technology, regional parks, transportation, waste management, recycling, and water resources.
Okay, thanks, Britt. Okay, Mr. Wheat.
Good morning, John Wheat, Department of Airports. We've got for the upcoming five-year program approximately $222 million at the four airports over that five-year period. For our 2017-2018, we are looking, we are requesting a little over $46.6 million. Couple of major projects I wanted to point out, at International Airport, in the 2017-18 budget, there's a $10 million appropriation to rehabilitate our west runway. That is only a beginning of the total cost of that project. It will be phased over a two-year program, the total cost is actually $37 million. Once that's completed, then our major runway and taxiway systems will be reconstructed and in very, very good shape. We'll also be doing, continuing to do rehabilitation on Terminal A. The first phase will be the replacement of several jet bridges on that terminal, followed in the next year with the continuation of that same plan. We're also pleased to announce that, from a sustainability standpoint, we will be going into the market for electric buses for our shuttle system.
Wow.
That's something that the Air Resource Board is looking at all airports in California, and requiring that to be done by a certain date. So we are investing, both this year, we're making the order, it's a two-year lead time to get those, we'll be purchasing four to five of those for the time being. And then the following year, we will be putting in the appropriate infrastructure, so that we can charge them, we can maintain them, and do whatever else that we need to do. With the ultimate plan, that over time, as those buses reach their useful life, we'll be operating 100% electric vehicles for all of our shuttle operations. At Mather Airport, I just wanted to point out, there's a $6 million project, which will be a major phase of reconstructing the general aviation ramp. As you know, we're in the process of putting in the Trumper roadway now, and this is in the next phase to get the flight line up to, up to a level that we would consider very acceptable. Also, we're, we'll be starting the process, the runways out there over the next six years are going to require quite a bit of work. The first phase is going to be on the shorter runway, with an estimated cost of $2,000. The one item that's not shown here, that I wanted to bring to your attention, is that we also, at Mather Airport, will be installing a Category 2 ILS system. That system, I know you, we've probably had many discussions previously, of a Category 3 system that was estimated at about $13 million. This system will meet all of the demands of our operators out there, and with UPS from a standpoint of visibility, to not have planes that can't land because of poor visibility. And the cost of that is going to be around $2 million. So we are very happy with that approach, and will be moving ahead. That kind of wraps up the major projects. I would like to point out that of that $229 million that we'll be spending over the next five years, 74% of it is related to rehabilitation of existing facilities or infrastructure.
Okay. Ms. Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, John. So the $2 million change for, I mean, I'm sorry, the $2 million Cat 2 project is a change from the proposed Cat 3?
That is correct.
What kind of savings is that?
It's about an $11 million savings.
Wow.
Cat 3 was estimated at 13, and this is estimated at around $2 million.
All right.
It's the same ILS that we're putting in on the east runway at this time, which will bring us up, will give us great capabilities on that runway as well, along with the Cat 3 on our other runway.
And are any of the, the construction that's going on, the projects that are in the plan, are they going, at Mather specifically, are they going to have to, are any of the current tenants out there going to have to move? Are we going to lose any tenants over that?
I think we've pretty much, there are some. I mean, we're working with Mather Aviation, which is a major maintenance facility out there, of building, getting them to build a new hangar on the new flight line. And we've also, obviously, had discussions with UPS. Once the Cat 2 can go in and is operational, they will be relocating to the much larger 60, you know, the much larger concrete ramp. So then we'll be able to finish off Trumper Road across the entire airport, and then start giving us the opportunity to figure out the commercial type of development we want to do on the other side.
So specifically, the Mather Aviation one, it's, the issue still hasn't been solved, it's just, you're still working through it?
We're discussing that with them. They know exactly what they want, they've identified it, they're working towards obtaining financing associated with that, and we've determined where it's going to be located.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. John, I have a question about the Franklin Field. It looks like that, not this upcoming budget in the year, but next year, 18-19, that you've contemplated some work, but I'm curious that, on the rehabilitation of the aircraft parking apron at Franklin Field, in the budget item we show here, under project management and design, it's got $1 million, it's a $1,050,000 project, but you have zero for construction, and you got $1,018,000 for project management and design?
I'll, I'd have to get back to you on that, John, I'm sure that's incorrect.
Yeah, because again, because that would even be, that would be the work you're going to do. I mean, I thought the project was...
The project is pavement, so the vast majority of that cost is going to be pavement.
Yeah, okay, so it should be in the construction category versus, because I get anybody to read that, they're thinking you're going to spend $1 million on...
Yeah, no, I apologize for that. I'm sure that's an oversight.
Okay. And so are you, my question then, linking that with the roadwork for the entry row, which is, you know, it's passable, it's probably better than some of the county roads out there, but it's still in pretty, pretty poor condition. So you're going to, you're going to do both of those at the same time, is that what you contemplated, did you do the road, we do the pavement apron?
That's correct. It's going to be the same type of work, so it will be one mobilization, and we did that, we were, you look at the previous years, we had $500,000 in three separate years.
Right.
We decided, let's combine that into one project, and we believe we'll get a benefit associated with that in cost.
Okay, okay, good. And then you mentioned it very briefly at Mather, but so you're going to look at the commercial area once you do the Trumper Way, and you've worked it out, the details with UPS, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's something on our three-year window, to really determine what's the best approach, from either a public-private approach, or a third-party approach, or exactly what is the best approach to get that in place.
Okay, all right. Any other questions, airports, Executive International? Okay, good.
Thank you.
Thanks, John, appreciate it. And then you'll make the correction in that chart, then on the design? Okay, great, thanks. Okay, next, Mr. Morris.
Good morning.
Morning, Mike.
Chair Nattoli, members of the Board, Mike Morris, Department of General Services. On our five-year program, we have 109 projects that are either underway or will begin, in our, for a total of about $195 million, of which in 17-18, we're scheduling about $52 million worth of projects. A couple of key projects that I'll mention today, at the voter registration and elections and Sheriff's Office on 65th Street, we are doing three projects there, totaling about $2.4 million. One of those is an ADA upgrades in parking lot maintenance. One is a very badly needed roof replacement, and also replacing the rooftop heating and air conditioning package units. Also, at the agriculture, agricultural commissioners' building, we have two projects there that are about $1 million, one of which is, again, an ADA improvements package, and the other is the community room upgrade. That community room, I think, still has the avocado refrigerator in the kitchen out there. It's, gets a lot of use, both by staff and the public, so we're going to do a major upgrade of that, of that room.
I have mentioned to Mike that that is a retro coming back.
That is retro, that's right, yeah, as I said.
Leave it alone.
Just leave it alone.
Yeah. Well, hopefully we have a master food preserver program that can complement the use of the avocado stove top range there.
Yeah, and we also have about $10 million in essential roof projects that'll be completed in 17-18 as well. And I have staff here, if you have any questions on our program.
Okay. Quite a list of projects, $195 million, that's, you know, a few budget years. Any questions? Okay, if not, thanks, Mike, appreciate it. Good morning, Rami.
Good morning, Supervisors. Rami Zachariah, Chief Information Officer. For the technology improvement plan for 2017-18, we have five projects that are active, and two are in the unfunded categories. One of the major projects that we will be starting in 2017-18 is the budget development system. We have finished the requirement gathering phase, and we expect to go out on market on around June to solicit for RFPs. Our county clerk recorder cashing system in the early stages of implementation. Our SRCS radio system will be adding 12 new channels in 2017-18. And in 2017-18 as well, we will be upgrading our county phone systems. For the unfunded projects that we have are the tax system replacement and the voting system replacement projects. The tax system, the requirements, we have gathered the requirements, we are ready to go to market once there is a viable solution out there. For the voting system, we are still in early stages of gathering requirements for the county to move forward with those. It's an ambitious plan for technology for the county of Sacramento, but we feel very good about where we are, and ready to move forward with that. Happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I do, just as it relates to, you know, voter registration and elections, obviously the tax system, and, you know, again, that's very important, that we know that we need to just collect property taxes and other receipts for the county, maybe that's for distribution, and certainly redemption with the state, but also for many, many other entities depend upon that. But to voter registration and elections, and actually, I heard Jill on the radio a couple weeks ago, pending legislation as it relates to the vote by mail, but certainly this gravitation and move towards folks electing to vote by mail, and yet still, many folks had wished to come to a polling place, and so, this shows 2022, it is unfunded, and I got to imagine that something like that, I mean, the estimate right here that we show in our folder is $8 million. And then, obviously, there's, you know, some action by this board, depending upon what we were to do, if legislation provided for, for vote by mail in certain election periods and so forth. So where are we? I mean, we spent some time and effort, and we show in this year's budget, a grant, I guess apparently there's a $1.2 million grant that's available, but we have nothing budgeted, and again, this is a little bit, I think, dated, is maybe current in respect that it gives us historical, but I guess I'm curious, Rami, and maybe others are here, or somebody else has a handle, but I do think it's something this county's going to have to maintain some focus on, and, you know, with the changing technology out there, as well as the costs that can be incurred, if you make this investment, and, you know, all the security that goes in, all the technology goes in behind the system. So maybe you can offer any comments, you know, that you are aware of where we are with all this?
In my discussion with Jill, that we are looking at two scenarios. One is the voting center solution, and one is the traditional polling place. And I believe a study or a survey was completed, I don't have the results of those study, but I'm happy to pass this over to Jill to kind of...
Actually, I can assist on that. We did do a survey to find out what's the interest out there, and the survey closed last Friday. So we're waiting on the results to come in. Our intent is to come back to the Board with the policy question about, based on the survey, would the county want to go vote by mail, or do we pursue the new equipment? And the date escapes me, but I believe it's the first meeting in May that we're supposed to come back to you with that discussion.
Okay, that's a discussion, but that's not all vote by mail, that's vote centers versus traditional polling...
Correct.
Places, and it's about half the cost, if I recall.
That's correct. But one of the things we wanted to make sure was, input we got from the Board last time on one of Jill's updates that she had, was that there was an interest to see what is the, what's the, if you will, what's the polling on this?
Right.
How many folks want to do it? We've had, heard, Jill had heard that about 60% of our electorate wanted to go vote by mail, but we want to get some confirmation on that.
Okay, so you'll be able to, because this talks about, the other thing is in, is in the CIP, it says that if the Board voted, you could actually implement the vote center by 2018, but that's a little bit of aggressive schedule, you're figuring, basically, 14 months from now, you have the June primary, and so, and yet, you have to expect... yet, you have to expect the completion date is 2022, so I guess maybe when you bundle all that, but you're now, when you send us to the commission for consideration and it comes back to us during budget, will you update that?
Yes. Our intent is to update this when we come back to you.
Okay. All right. Mr. Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have one question regarding the public safety radio system upgrade of the, I see $70 million project with the roughly $2 million through the different grants. The $15 million from SRRCS, is, is that borne by other jurisdictions that are participating in it as well or is that just the county's share?
No, that's, that's the entire, the entire fees. The Sacramento Regional Radio Communication System has about 115 participating agencies throughout the county that are, some are state, federal and local police department for responders, as well as other, you know, private like ambulance providers and that sort of stuff.
So are they contributing to that as well?
Oh, absolutely. The project is predominantly funded through user fees.
Right. Okay. Great, thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions on this category? Okay, good. Thanks, Ryan.
Thank you.
Good morning, Jeff.
Good morning, members of the board. Jeff Leatherman, Director of Regional Parks, still today. And just touching on a couple of items within our CIP, we have two projects listed in our active for the next five years. The American River Parkway Trail, which is our Measure A projects and just a couple of comments on those is, we've got some maintenance work that we'll be doing throughout the trail system based on our asphalt conditions, but primarily over the next year, we're working on the Jabeum Street Bridge rehab and that's in partnership with the Department of Transportation. So you'll see on transportation's list, item number 45, which is the Jabeum Street Rehab, they're running that project for us, but we're also partnering with them through some Measure A fundings in order to fund a portion of that project as well as it relates to bike commuting through the Discovery Park area. So just wanted to highlight that crossover in the two projects. And then we also have the Horseshoe Lake Restoration Project at the Casumus River Preserve that we're working through the potential of receiving grant money for here over the next course of the two years in order to fund that rehab. And I know we've had some questions about some of the rehab that we've been doing as it relates to giant gardener snakes before. This is not relocating those giant gardener snakes, but it is improving the habitat in those areas. The big change that we've had in the CIP is we've moved a number of our projects over into the unfunded category and you have that there in the CIP. We have 90 projects that we've recognized throughout the regional park system as unfunded and we've started to track those, recognizing that we have a number of partners, whether they're nonprofits or other government agencies, that help support various projects within the regional park system and we've started to recognize the needs of our various facilities there in the unfunded section. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have on the two active projects or the others.
Okay. Questions? I, I did have a couple, Jeff. One being, where does the American River Ranch line out in this, you know, I can see American River Parkway and we did fund some improvements this past year, but where does, is that, is that 28 where you have Soilborne Farms? Is that, is that their school? Is that where?
Correct. So in the unfunded section, you'll find both the American River Ranch and Soilborne Farms listed. Depending on the project type, we've categorized them a little bit differently. So we have, the American River Ranch is most of our infrastructure projects and Soilborne Farms would be new development projects in the unfunded category.
Okay. Well, and again, by lumping these all together, I guess it gives you this price tag, you're looking at 2.6 million. I think that's maybe one of the things here in trying to consolidate that you get, you know, you don't, you get the total, but you know, the sums part of, that add up to this. And I know that we've had meetings and certainly Sean and others have been here for this body, you know, certainly want to partner with the county, as many do, and we have, you know, a number of different areas, we've got a list of 90 things that encompass millions and millions and millions of dollars of improvements. I guess to the point though, that's been made, certainly you've heard it, I know that both Nav and Rob have heard it as well, you know, breaking this down a bit, you know, you put it all in one unfunded and it just like this big lump sum. It's like 2.6 million, we'll never get there, so you might as well just go past 28, 29 and on down the list if you ever get to 28. And these aren't any ranked order, they're alphabetical, but, and so I guess the point I want to make is that for consideration, I guess I'm just, I'm going to put a plug in here for, for budget, looking this year, I know that we were able to help with some of the facilities and we, what we're talking about is an investment that the county will ultimately end up, they're not things you can pick up and take away, that they're going to be a part of that, whether it's Soilborne or whoever, and hopefully Soilborne will be a very long-term partner with the county. And so I don't know, I notice certainly this, you know, some of this may be considered a wish list, but I'd like to make sure that for purposes of June budget consideration and September, assuming that there's, you know, the interest by this board, that at least we get some breakdown of kind of what's the priority order out there. And, and maybe you have a sub-list that goes with these that are, that rank them in some way, but if you just kind of put things in, in a cup or in a bucket, then, you know, it's kind of enough to us either to decipher that or to bring that up from, from this side of the, of the dais. I guess I would hope that in addition to any other competing needs along the Parkway or any other park lands or open space areas, that we have some ability, rather than just move everything over to unfunded and say, take your pick, board, you know, you can start spending money wherever you want to spend it, that there is a priority ranking and, and do you have that? And again, and for maybe facility-wise, because you could take the Parkway as being one, you could spend millions there and every, you know, make a dent, but elsewhere. And so, you know, rather than just, you know, have it always come from this side, I guess I'd like to see what the priorities would be, working with our partners and, you know, and recognizing some of the wear and tear that we have in some of the, some of the areas, whether open space or active parks, so.
So to answer the first question, we do have additional detail behind some of the areas where we have lumped in larger projects. So when you look at the American River Ranch specifically, we have the infrastructure details as it relates to sewer connections and rooftops, and so we can break that down further. We have not done the work of starting to prioritize some of those individual smaller projects with our stakeholders, but we can certainly do that and try have a better understanding of where, you know, if we were to invest additional resources from that unfunded category to get a further breakdown of where those priorities would be.
So one of the purpose today is that we have not presented to you for about the last decade, a comprehensive list of what the unfunded needs are. So this is what we believe are the unfunded needs. So part of this is to engage the board in a conversation, is there other projects as we are discussing this that you see in parks that you want us to add and talk about? Once we get the feedback from you, we can, any meeting you can give us that feedback, then in June when we adopt the budget and the CIP, we have an idea what the unfunded are and then start working with the stakeholders that off the unfunded, which ones, if we were to fund in the future, what would they say? But the first step for us is to talk to you about, is this list fairly comprehensive? Are we missing something? What else would you like to add? Is there anything in here that you look at and say, well, we're never going to do it? Take that off the list.
Okay.
We can start with that one first.
Yeah, well, that helps. And again, and so I guess having that list, you know, certainly, you know, we can add to this today and I want to offer suggestions in just a moment for what I think needs to be on here. But again, then coming back, as we sorted the budget, I just, again, I wanted to put a marker out there for American River Ranch.
And we can get you that breakdown. Jeff has the breakdown, we can, we can send you that memo that has that in there, so we can take...
Yeah, and again, because again, you know, we did some last year, but I think, you know, certainly his appeal to us, not unlike others that we hear, but was, you know, you know, county, you're a partner, you know, and you're getting just not only the programming that they do, but certainly the investments there, like up and down the American River Parkway. I did want to, I want to ask a couple of Mather items, so if Ms. Peters needs to, excuse yourself just for a second. I wanted to ask about the driving range. It shows it's still under reevaluation. We have had some...
This is on, this is on the unfunded list?
Yes, unfunded list, yeah. We do have some dollar figures. I know I raised it in the context of Mather reappropriation monies that we've got from, from previous redevelopment and sales of property and, and you, you know, we have different options. It's not about moving the driving range as much as it is, is making sure that we have, you know, netting that's one in place and secondly, that would be help with some of that interface between a road that we're going to widen and improve and, you know, encourage more traffic on and so. Again, I don't put it all back on parks. I think this needs to be something that needs to be looked at and Nav will look at you on this one. That one, we've talked about it previously, needs to, you know, get up on the, on the priority list and it's not to get, to take away from other things, but because of some of the things that have been brought to our attention about, you know, errata, you know, shots that have ended up in people's windshields and cars and again, the golf course operators taking care of those on an individual basis, but I think we have an obligation to at least improve the situation. We're not going to totally eliminate that, but when we're going to put in millions and millions of dollars to improve Zimphondale Eagles Nest Road and, and then look at, you know, potential other development out there, then I think that, you know, that we need to, to step up on this one. And so again, you know, in your budget, obviously it isn't funded, but I think it needs, you know, again, the, the solution sets aren't, some of them are more modest. I guess they were in the $100,000, $120,000 range to raise some of the poles and some of the netting if I correct.
You are correct, yeah. And the intent here in, in calling this out as under evaluation is that top-end piece of the evaluation of moving the driving range isn't complete. We expect that, the, the environmental review piece, information piece to be coming out later this month and that'll give us a better assessment of, you know, what the entirety of the range is from kind of the bookend, as you said, 135 to probably over a million dollars.
Okay, okay. One other thing I wanted to, it needs to get on the list and I think that, you know, parks and certainly I want to compliment, you know, Jeff and his work with other county departments, certainly economic development on this, but the Mather Preserve, it doesn't appear on this list. I know it's still under, you know, we're still working through that, but it, it's apparent to me, and I've said this before, and I'm going to say it again this morning, that at $85,000 a year, that that's not adequate to do what we need to do. There's been a situation recently where I've made available some neighborhood funding to assist for a more urgent need. I'm willing to do that, but, but my point being is that parks, economic development, you know, whoever's going to be in charge of this, but I think certainly Jeff and his, and his folks have been, you know, given a lot of that, certainly on the, on the ground, it's been funded in, in, in part by economic development or in good part. We need to figure that out and it needs to be, again, it's going to be, I trust it's going to be in the, in the parks realm and if that's the case, then it needs to want to get on the list, but we also need to recognize that, you know, we're going to figure out endowments going forward and again, the good work that's going on with the committee and, and others. Again, is there a reason why it doesn't, where does it show up? Whose list is that on now? Anybody's?
It's, that's a great question. I, I don't know that any of the infrastructure is on any of the CIP lists. We have fencing and I think it just is something that got missed in the crossover.
So that's an add.
That's an add. And that's, and that's the main reason why we're in front of you.
That's good, that's good. It is positive.
Yes, it's positive.
So again, and so it doesn't fall back to Jeff to try to figure out how he's going to post in cable or economic development or whatever, that this becomes, it's in somebody's realm, maybe it's in, in a couple of different realms, but then that we...
I think we could put it in parks. I mean, this is Mather Preserve and we'll...
Yeah.
Create a page for it.
Yeah, that's appropriate. Again, I wasn't trying to make a determination, but again, I didn't see it on any of the lists and I thought maybe it's buried somewhere or...
No, it's not, no.
It is not.
Okay, good. All right. Those are my, my comments, so. Okay, I'm done with the Mather portion. Ms. Frost, do you have questions?
Jeff, I had a gentleman come to my office to share with me about this 70-mile regional bike trail and the connections and, and he mentioned that in Placer County, they received, or in Roseville, they received a grant and they'll be working on their portion of that trail and that there's some disconnects. I see Dry Creek, I'm assuming that's one of the disconnects with that 70-mile regional bikeway and walking trail.
You're correct. You're correct. The Dry Creek Phase 2 would be the connection up to the county line.
Are we, I mean, that's really exciting. Are we focused on that or is that our goal and do we have a timeline working toward that? Seems like that could open up some wonderful events and opportunities for recreation, different, you know, variety of places where people can go. That's number one question. Then the other question in connection with that was, he, he mentioned that there weren't a lot of bridges that go across the river. I know bridges are expensive, so I just wonder if you could kind of give me an idea of how many access bridges we have that cross the river and are there plans moving forward to increase those opportunities?
When we say access bridge, are we talking about the American River in that question? So Dry Creek Phase 2 and then American River Bridge crossings?
Yes.
Okay. So Dry Creek Phase 2 has been a project that's been on the books for a number of years. We've submitted at least two grant applications, which have been unsuccessful. It is currently a project that we've identified of high importance, but we do not have funding for those projects. We do have, and working with various specific plans, specifically the Alberta specific plan, looking at abilities and ways to connect that future community into the Dry Creek Parkway, but again, we do not have any project funding specifically for that project. As it relates to bridge crossings across the American River, the American River Parkway Plan allows for bike ped crossings and it doesn't specify where those are required to go, but does allow for them to happen. We haven't gone through the exercise of actually finding ways or identifying locations of where those bridge crossings should be. It certainly could be a planning exercise that would be allowed in our Measure A funding, but right now we've focused our Measure A funding on actual repairs to the existing trails and new access locations onto the existing, existing trails. The Parkway Plan calls out for a number of different access locations specifically needed and we're working our way through those lists. The other bridge crossing that we're working on maintaining with our Measure A money is that Jabeum Street Bridge that I mentioned earlier and the key for us there is maintaining both the vehicle access across the, the American River, but also the bike access. Second behind that, sort of related to the Measure A funding would be repairs to the PCA Bridge there in Upper Sunrise that was damaged due to the high flows that we had earlier this year. Ideally, that will be reimbursed through the federal government, but we are repairing that bridge now and using Measure A funding to do those repairs.
Thanks.
Okay. Jeff, just before you leave, I just, one other thought occurs to me that as the legislature continues its deliberations about what they may put forward to the voters relative to park bonds or open space bonds and urban parks and so forth. When I look at this list and, and think about it, and obviously we get another item this morning about the conservancy, which could be a conduit for money certainly for the Parkway, but I think that those conversations with our local legislators as those measures go together and, you know, I'll, I think a good example is what transpired with whatever one's view of it is relative to the gas tax and so forth, but, you know, legislators who, again, indicated some concerns, certainly as it related to, to measures, that one, again, was enacted by the legislature, this one would require, you know, a construct that would go before the voters, a park bond of some sort. I think it's important to recognize that, as I've heard this discussion, seen it reported that they talk about, you know, reinvesting in urban parks and, you know, and, you know, equal opportunity and so forth. I get all that, but when I look at what we have in this park system in this metropolitan area and what the county, certainly in addition to other park districts and other entities maintain and put forth, I mean, we have this treasure. I mean, I mentioned, you know, the preserve at Mather, but I think about Sherman Island and I think about Hogback and Elkhorn and, you know, and Widder Ranch and, you know, and it goes on and on and on and on. And Deer Creek Hills and so, you know, north, south, east and west in this county, you know, both the connectivity, but the need to invest in, in, you know, repairs and, and upgrades that as, you know, as our population grows and so forth, that we can maintain the attractiveness, the accessibility to those opportunities right here in, you know, in our, in our front yard, so to speak. I think it's important, again, I don't know what sort of engagement we've had, discussions that, you know, as they're putting together their lists and they're going to, you know, they're going to put Christmas lists in order to entice, I'm sure legislators to, you know, support certain measures. Again, not to get out ahead of this board on what position we might or might not take about on the, on the, the measures themselves. I guess to you, to Nav, to, to Rob, to others, what sort of engagement are we having with our local legislative delegation relative to seeing to it that, you know, not everything goes to Southern California for, you know, parks and, you know, counties and major metropolitan areas down there, but that this, you know, community, this county, on behalf of all the folks, whether they live in a city or a county, that these treasures that we have treasures that we have, that we're in line, at least can be competitive, you know, we all, we have been, but they're going to call out a lot of things that our money's going to go directly to certain things. And I just think that, you know, if we're not a part of the discussions as they're crafting those measures, then we, you know, you get a side seat somewhere, and maybe you pick a few dollars up along the way once they do some bond expenditure. And again, that, you know, I don't, you know, predict what's going to happen with that, but I just, I think that it's important because this list here speaks to those amenities that we, you know, we, one, this board, but certainly this community has decided are important. We can only invest so many local dollars. If we had $20 million to put towards this, you know, you wouldn't hardly make a dent in this list. And some of these are, you know, more wishes than not. And so I guess my point being is that I think that we need to, as their work continues over there, at least if nothing else, to make sure somebody has, has our list, and it can be our, you know, voice over there. If we can't do it ourselves, and maybe we can, maybe, you know, it's, if some of us as board members visiting with our local legislative delegation and anybody else in leadership and say, hey, you know, us too, don't just forget about this part of California when it comes to your considerations, because we do more than just urban parks. We do that whole realm and range, and I think, you know, we ought to be sure that, you know, it's, our message is clear. So I don't know if you have anything to add, Jeff, but...
The, so as it relates specifically to the existing park bond legislation, our lobbyists do have our priorities as it relates to the American River Parkway and helping to advocate and seek for funds for the American River Parkway Conservancy Program. We've also worked with them just in understanding the broader context of the specifically AB-18, which is much more broad than SB-5. And, and as we've reviewed that bill itself, there are a number of categories, as you stated, that as you look across our project sheets, would apply for, would, would be consistent with the criteria that has been drafted so far in both of those pieces of legislation. And so we're continuing to watch that and identify project categories that fit within our CIP and deferred maintenance programs here.
And furthermore, after we get input on this list, that's part of our thought process is to go to our lobbyists, state level, share the list so they have it, if there are programs, grants that state's giving out, so they can look for us. Similar approach on the federal side, even though money's really drying up from the feds, but have the federal lobbyists have the list too, if there are any kind of grants or any, any kind of money that's available for park amenities, open space, is to have our list in front of them. So even 100,000 helps with one of these little projects.
Yeah, well, I think, you know, some headliner projects, because I, you know, seeing some of those previous bond acts, they have these categories, but then they also call out specifics. They're not just to conservancies, they're to, you know, city of XYZ, and they get it for, you know, this, you know, park acquisition, or they get it for, you know, investment in, you know, in a historical area or trail network, to Ms. Frost's, you know, point a moment ago. And so it may be that some of those key ones, again, not to disadvantage anything else, because we'll compete along with everybody else in those categories, but if there are some projects that beyond the American River Parkway that really do rise and could, you know, get inserted as callouts, and, you know, that's, that's part of the crafting process over there and legislative process, but I guess I would just encourage us to, you know, we have that short, short list of ones that might have a fairly good price tag to them, but say you put this in here, and, you know, we want to do this linkage or that linkage, and that for a million bucks, you put us in for a million, and then, you know, you're assured getting that versus having to compete, you know, with everybody else and get your fair share, so.
Part of it, we absolutely agree with it, and what we don't want to have happen is that American River Parkway becomes the only asset, if you will, from parks that people think about Sacramento County. As you mentioned, we have a lot of different facilities from Sherman Island all the way up to Ms. Frost's district that I think are meritorious Dry Creek, so we need to get that in front of folks so that when money, when they're thinking about it, could be different use for Sherman Island, might be different for American River Parkway, Rancho Marietta Park, so that's what our intent is to get this list out as much as we can.
Okay, all right, good. Any other questions for Jeff? If not, thanks Jeff, appreciate it. Okay, next. Transportation, Mr. Schuman. Transportation.
Good morning. I'm Dan Schuman. It's Department of Transportation. For transportation, the CIP includes 65 projects with a total value of about $440 million, $365 million of which is falling in the five-year timeframe of the CIP. We're funded by various sources from state and federal sources, Measure A sales tax, our countywide development fee, special financing plan area fees, as well as the road fund. And just the, what you see in the CIP is, is based on the Transportation Improvement Program Guide that we were in front of you back on March 7th. So we essentially have the same projects represented in the CIP. Just to highlight a few in our major corridors, the Hazel Avenue Improvement Project, the second phase is currently under construction. That's doing the widening, median construction, new bike lanes, sidewalks, Parkway features from Sunset Avenue down to Curra Downs Drive. The Phase Three, final phase of that project from Sunset up to Madison is in design and is expected to be bid late next year for construction in 2019. And then a couple of other major corridor projects in development include Elk Grove, Florin, South Want, from Gerber Road up to Jackson Highway, as well as a couple of interchange projects in development at US Highway 50 and Hazel Avenue, and Interstate 5 at the Metro Era Parkway. Bicycle and pedestrian ADA accessibility improvements. We have in development three separate projects on Power and Road that will result in complete continuous sidewalks from Elsie all the way up to north of Florin. We also have projects underway doing various sidewalk infill, bike lane upgrades, intersection upgrades along Florin Road, 47th Avenue, Hurley Way, Cottage Way and on Folsom Boulevard. There are several projects that we like to call corridor enhancement or complete street projects. These focus on the aging corridors in the county where we're installing new sidewalks, bike lanes, other pedestrian and bicycle amenities, also throwing in aesthetic improvements such as streetscape and landscape improvements, all with really the intent of improving accessibility for all users in those corridors, as well as, as well as supporting new infill development in some of those. One of the major ones currently underway, Fair Oaks Boulevard, the Phase Two of that project is under construction between Engle Road and Landis Avenue, and that will be completed this summer. And then that will be followed by the third phase from Landis down to Marconi, which will go under construction next year. And then we have in development the second phase of improvements for the old Florin Town segment of Florin Road between Florin Perkins and Power Inn, as well as the North Want segment between Interstate 80 and Roseville Road. The CIP also includes 13 projects that will replace or rehabilitate structurally deficient bridges around the county. These include some major roads such as Elk Grove, Florin Road, Twin Cities, Realinda Boulevard, and Franklin Boulevard, as well as a number of rural roads. We have two bridges on Ione Road and a bridge on McKenzie Road going out to construction at the end of this year. And then, of course, Jeff mentioned the Jaboom Street Bridge that we're working with the county parks on to rehabilitate that bridge. And then finally, the CIP does include a few projects for road rehabilitation and safety. We have three federally-funded overlay projects doing overlays in various locations countywide. Fulton Avenue is receiving an overlay and sidewalk infill work from Arden Way up to Avon Boulevard. We have two streetlight projects in development to install new streetlights, including the Florin area and in the Rosemont area. And then we have our neighborhood, ongoing neighborhood traffic or neighborhood traffic management program to address speeding concerns in residential areas. So those are the highlights that I have, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thanks, Dan, for running through that. And a lot of stuff in a short order, so let me ask comments or questions from, Ms. Peters.
There's not a question on this, but SB-1 did just pass across the street there. And will we have a list of what your projects are to spend that money by June or September?
Yes, we should, definitely. One of the things we're, we're doing right now is we're working with CSAC to really determine what the funding levels are going to be each year. We've received more general numbers that, for instance, for the fix-it-first component of SB-1, which is the $3 billion a year that goes to the state and the local agencies, that over the 10-year period, we would see about $280 million coming to the county, so averaging 28 million a year. It'll be something different the first year because the revenues phase in over about three years, and the, the first of those, which will go in effect in November, are the gas tax and the diesel taxes. And those, of course, make up the bulk of the revenues. So we're going to see some partial, but we do, first of all, to, you know, be able to deal with the shortfall we've been discussing with you in our road fund. And then we expect to have additional funds going into next year. But either for the June or the September budget hearings, we should be able to have a very comprehensive outlook as to what we're going to do year to year even, or at least for the first few years.
I'm more interested in the exact projects. I know it'll be year to year, but I want to make sure that transportation is moving to get contracts out this fall, so construction can start in the spring and not, we don't lose, you know, two years here in a cycle.
Right, right.
Because, I mean, I know you have, you know what needs to be done. I just want to be assured that you're working the program sufficiently so that we will be able to approve those projects in the fall.
Definitely, and we'd be able to come and meet with each of you to really identify at least what we're recommending in each district, kind of like we've done with the other overlay projects.
And by when will that happen?
We should be able to do that. I'm going to be careful about speaking for the director and the chief of maintenance, but I would think we would have enough information to at least begin that process by June. We should be getting the details here in the next couple of weeks on what we should expect in revenues.
Thank you.
So we'll be looking for September budget?
I believe so. I mean, this is, this has been evolving, so we still have to huddle up and come up with a timeline on this.
Okay.
But the point that Supervisor Peters makes is that it's, it is in our form, we were thinking about that, how to get maximum out of it and not lose time.
Okay. All right. I had a couple of questions, Dan, one being in one of the projects that was actually dropped from the list. I know the development hasn't proceeded, but they're still an approved project, and they're coming back through, and that's on page F6, number 13, which is the Bradshaw Landing US Highway 50 ramp widening. And I think some work was done there, but that was part of the traffic mitigation. We already spent some money. You know, it's certainly development dependent when, you know, the Bradshaw Six Theaters, you know, cease operation and, and they come in with a plan. They haven't abandoned that plan, and there was agreements to, you know, make sure that revenues that, you know, were derived from that, some of them being, those that float the county would actually go into transportation. So why did that get dropped?
Well, they're, at least going into developing this and the tip, actually, we did not have, certainly not a construction funding source yet, because that's something that really comes about when we have, you know, really when the development is actually moving forward. But we were beginning the work on some of the project delivery and design work, which would come out of the road fund. Given the shortfall we were facing in the road fund, it was one of those that we felt we couldn't proceed with at this time to bring it back. With a different outlook now in terms of our road fund, we can take another look at that and possibly revive it in the next year.
So what do you mean it's dropped? It's just, it goes back on this list over here that doesn't have funding assigned to it?
Doesn't get lost.
Yeah.
It's not lost, no, definitely not. We, you know, in the agreement with the development, we were going to be advancing it with county funds. And so now that we have a little better outlook on that, I think we're in a better position to be able to schedule it.
Yeah, you've answered it, Dan.
Yeah.
Just another note, as we look at, you know, what revenues are available and do the assessment, you bring that forward in the next few months, I would just put another exclamation point certainly behind, you know, pavement repair, but the curb gutter and sidewalk replacement at $300,000 a year, you know, we're not even keeping up with the degradation of, you know, even looking at newer neighborhoods that, you know, when they get into that, you know, 20, 30-year age, they begin to show that wear and tear. And so I think, I'm going to suggest that that, you know, we've kind of carried this annually, at least making some investment, but for a county our size and for the infrastructure that we take responsibility for, that's an area that I trust that'll get, get a staff look at it, but that's an area where I think we need to beef up. But I know we made investments, again, this board took, you know, some of our, you know, tobacco litigation funding and some other monies that we've received and put, you know, major investment, you know, of course with the backlog of many millions, but put, you know, 11, 12, 15 million dollars in over a course of a few years that made a difference. But I think we're going to continue to lose ground if we don't put more in there on that. And then lastly, I just want to ask you about the Grantline Road shoulder construction. You contemplated actually doing that over the next couple of years. I want to just be clear, that's through the Cordova Hills Special Finance District, and of course, that project has not yet come out of the ground, and they're, you know, certainly in their formative stages with an approved development project. But we're looking at putting about $5 million of shoulders and, and moving the roadside ditches and so forth. I don't know what sort of rideaway has to be acquired, but is that all going to align with the connector so we don't have throwaway costs? And I say throwaway in the sense, what happened to intersection after we did white rock improvements to the, to the east, as you're well aware, that intersection didn't comport with the, you know, with the connector. And so we, it wasn't totally throwaway, but we're now reconfiguring the Prairie City and, you know, under the current plan. And so I want to be sure that if we put this in, put shoulders in, because you're not changing the lay of the road, and, and that ultimately has to be, you know, those vertical and horizontal curves have to be, you know, modified at some juncture. So I want to be sure this money is being well spent. I know there's a safety issue out there, I get that, but I want to be sure we're not just putting money there, it's going to patch it over for a few years and then come back and hide it and tear it up.
Right, well, it's, it's expected that there is probably going to be some throwaway on it.
There is.
Just because the alignment that's developing for the connector isn't always, you know, consistent with what is currently Grantline Road. This project is a, is a mitigation, it's a trigger for Cordova Hills. It's in fact their first trigger at like 250 housing units that this shoulder widening project is to go in place. So it's their desire to to move forward with delivering that as soon as possible.
We had to do some serious examination of that. I mean, you know, again, Cordova Hills is now, you know, that was approved in 2011, and, you know, we're in 2017, they're moving forward. And there's no doubt about it that we need, you know, road improvements out there. And certainly if you contributed, you know, those were environmentally cleared and vetted, but to your point, again, I, you know, we use the term throwaway, but basically you put them in place, they serve you for a while, but they don't, they're not the long-term fix out there. And before we, you know, invest a whole lot, we maybe ought to have some, you know, discussion around that, because again, if you're going to take $5 million, would that buy us a segment of road that would be fully improved, you know, recognize you're going to have some bottlenecks out there and, you know, I just don't, these dollars are all precious, because whether it comes from a development that has an impact or they come from, you know, countywide, you know, measure or statewide measure of some sort, that's a good deal of money. We're going to put the engineering in it, we're going to move fences back, move ditches, and then, and live with that maybe for a few years at most, and then come back and redo the whole thing potentially. And this is one of the segments, obviously, at least down the Douglas, that, you know, is, you know, earlier in the timeframe, but certainly doesn't have any fun, it doesn't have the funding behind it to do it. So I guess I would just ask from a staff perspective, you recognize that you have, you know, developer who has a commitment and obligation to do this, but, and maybe we need to be smart about the way we, you know...
And we're, we're really at the beginning stages of our discussions with the Cordova Hills people on this particular project. Again, it's their desire to at least get it moving forward in a design sense. The timing, of course, of the connector is very unclear, particularly that segment.
Right.
Their focus is on the segment to the east of Prairie City, so it's a little unclear as to when we could expect to see this. But I think, you know, as we, you know, move forward with Cordova Hills on advancing this project, that's something we can work with them on is to...
We get an annual report, it comes in the format of just something sent to the board, I think it may even get on the consent calendar. I guess I'm going to suggest that with this, because again, you're going to undertake engineering, maybe they do it, but they get credit for it. Before we get too far down the road, so to speak, on this, again, recognizing this, it is an obligation, and certainly we don't want to, you know, forestall their ability to move forward, we don't want to, you know, you know, add to a, you know, a section where we do have some safety issues already, speeds and obviously volumes that this country road has a tough time accommodating at times, and we have some serious accidents. I guess I'd ask, maybe we can, you know, have that, so we can at least have some conversation about it. We get some annual reports about formations, we see an item every once in a while on the agenda. agenda. But I can see this could get very far, you could have, you know, half a million dollars invested in engineering and then people say, well, why did we do that if you were going to do something different? And again, I, you know, I'd like to at least have the benefit of the analysis before we get too far and spend too much money to make sure that sequentially, I know you're on top of this, Dan, in the department, but I just, we're now far enough beyond the decision point and we're close enough to hopefully something's going to happen with the connector that maybe the timing is such that we could, you know, utilize this money, you know, a little smarter or maybe do less of what was contemplated here and have some more to put into something else.
Yes.
Okay, good. All right, that's all I have. Sorry for the long back and forth, but we don't need to decide anything on that day. So anything else on transportation? If not, thanks, Dan. Okay, we got water, water supply, water quality?
Good afternoon.
Yes, good afternoon. I'm Tim Israel with the Department of Waste Management and Recycling.
Oh, okay, good.
Here to talk about our 1718 capital budget of about $14 million. This budget consists of equipment purchases, new facility construction, and a maintenance of our existing facilities. I'll highlight a couple of our projects. First is the landfill gas and leachate management systems. We have budgeted, or we proposed budgeting about $840,000 for this project this year. It consists of continuing expansion of the landfill gas system at the Key for Landfill, improvements to the leachate collection system at that site, and replacement of equipment at our flare station and energy plant. Second project is our NARS equipment shop replacement project. This is a $6 million project. The project consists of constructing a 20,000-square-foot equipment maintenance shop. The facility will replace the existing shop that was originally constructed in 1970. And it's really no longer feasible for us to continue to try to modify the existing shop to achieve compliance with building standards for maintenance of the natural gas-fueled vehicles that we operate in our collection fleet. That said, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Yeah, Ms. Peters.
How, what do you think the estimated life of the NARS facility is? Do you plan to be there forever or are you going to be looking for a...
I think so. I mean, transfer of waste materials to wherever they're in disposition is going to be something that we're going to have to do for a long time, probably forever. So a transferred and recovery facility is essential in that.
I agree, a facility is, is essential. I just wonder if that location is the one that works on the long term since we're talking about a $6 million investment.
I believe our department believes that's the case, yeah.
Okay.
I do think we need to have some more conversation around, you know, in the sense that, you know, $6 million, you know, and again, obviously you have an enterprise fund that can support that. But when I think about the North Corporation yard that we went into, that we bought into, again, it's not that, cited at NARS, but it's approximate certainly there at Highway 80. And I think about the facility we built out at the landfill that is pretty underutilized that we spent two and a half million dollars 20 years ago on. And, and then I was just looking through the stuff here and I see fleet maintenance, we've got to put a new roof on that, that was a new, and so we, you know, it's a big county geographically, we, you know, again, we served the area, there's a lot of efficiencies into that. But before we jump into a $6 million expenditure, and I think, I just think we need to take a look at it, because we build these standalones that serve our fleets, they serve our customers, and we want, but when I see decisions that, again, in retrospect, you look back on and say, well, was that the best way to spend the money? Maybe, maybe not. I think when it comes to this, to Ms. Peters' question, I mean, that kind of occurred to me too, as I'm looking at that, maybe that's been on the list for a number of years, but that's a sizable expenditure. And if we, you know, make that investment, that $6 million less than the enterprise and, you know, we get some other rate impacts, and we've been very fortunate, because again, I think over the last few years, we've been able to hold rates stable and solid waste and recycling end of it. And I think I want to be cognizant of that too. When I look at some of the other things that come through, both in the sanitation, I hear from Water Resources in a moment, you know, we get these upward pressure on, on rates and again, if you don't do it, you know, you can either have, you know, safety issues in the workplace or, you know, inefficiencies that then cost money that may not be as apparent as spending the money on. So I guess I would just ask, you know, before we get into any final approval of this, that we get some, you know, that gets sorted out in a way that we have a clear understanding what the long-term plan is. And again, there are other improvements, and we already made some significant investments. In fact, today, the question that Supervisor Peters asked earlier about, you know, we went to the marketplace to make some improvements out there and found out that, you know, we were way under engineers. The estimate was, it was related to the costs out there. So before I'm prepared to say $6 million, just put another facility in out there, recognizing that we have an inventory that provides for similar type of, of maintenance, maybe a little different equipment, you know, why couldn't you do, I guess I'd question you, you know, aside from maybe your tractors and motors that are on site, those, those long haul trucks, the longer haul trucks, they got to go to the Key for Landfill, you got a facility out there, you got a facility out of Bradshaw. And we're going to build another standalone to the point, we need a building of some sort, but do we need to, what components? And, you know, I think we have a tendency to overbuild. And then these assets, it would become, again, responsibilities for the ratepayers and for this county that we rarely, you know, divulge, you know, or, you know, get rid of assets and sell them in the marketplace, we hang on to them and if nothing else, you know, they continue to be a cost center. And they compete against other things that need to be done. So I got, I just, you know, no reflection on the management and oversight, solid waste, certainly guys have done a good job, but I, I for one am, am very interested in looking at this closer.
My question was unrelated to Don's comments, it was more about, I think there's a more appropriate land use for that area. It's a growing business area, it's industrial, and there's a P-bid out there now, and I just wonder...
We're proudly part of one.
Yeah, I know, and you're part of it, yeah. I wonder whether there's a, some land nearby that we need to be thinking about as a potential transition for NARS.
Absolutely, we'll, we'll look into that.
Okay, thank you.
You tried to respond, you said, excuse me? You were going to say something else in a moment ago?
No.
Okay, okay. All right, very good. No other questions? Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay.
My name's David Boland, I'm the Capital Improvements Manager for Water Resources.
David, good afternoon to you.
I'd like to just highlight some of the overviews of the CIP section. We actually do drainage as well as the water supply for Water Resources. We have 54 projects totaling $193.1 million. In the drainage side of the house, we have 24 projects at $40.4 million. On the water supply side of the house, we have 30 projects that total $152.7 million. For the drainage projects, a couple highlighting items are, one that actually we are just wrapping up now is the DO5 Howe Avenue Pump Station upgrade, just in the nick of time. We did this this past year and winter, and it performed very well through the storm events that we had this winter, so very apropos timing on that project. Another project that we'll be working on is Elder Creek Phase 4, which is actually before the board today. Now will be constructed this summer, and that's an improvement on the creek segment in conjunction with other phasings that have been undergoing construction currently and in past years. On the water side of the house, a couple of projects to highlight would be the East Elk Grove Water Treatment Plant, Phase 4 Expansion. That will go to construction this summer, that's $2.26 million. That's bringing another well online and expanding the treatment plant to handle that added water, as well as the Arden Service Area Water Main and Meters Project. And that's a multi-phase project that's going to start this fall or next spring and continue through 2023 in the Arden Park area. That'll add retrofit meters to all the properties out there, as well as upgrade a significant portion of the distribution system.
Okay, thanks, David. Questions by board members?
There's any questions?
Just, just a quick comment, I know we're going to be back here in a couple of weeks talking about potential, or going through the process for rate adjustments. And, you know, part of this is that a number of cattle projects, certainly are done with development fees, some with ratepayer contributions to them. But I guess one of the things that concerns me is that we have, we have a list that, you know, may or may not have funding assigned to it, but we take on the infrastructure and, you know, once, what was once new is, is now old or in need of rehab. And I think, again, certainly both the water supply and drainage side of the house have done, you know, a good job in, you know, attending to that as best you could and with the budget limitations. But I am concerned that, and again, this will come up in a different context, but that it not only takes the capital dollars and, you know, you may have a one-time contract, but then you have, we have the staff behind that for not only a growing system, but for a system that from the standpoint of the customer base, really isn't all that large. And yet we've, you know, we're pretty extensive and we're scattered throughout in these pockets, certainly in, you know, northern part of the county. And then southern part of the county have, you know, very heavy concentration. But, you know, what was new in Laguna 30 years ago is now in need of either, you know, major repair or replacement. And same thing with even with East Elk Grove, we're now 15, 20 years out there in vineyard area. When I think of that water plant, I mentioned this to Mr. Peterson the other day, you know, the coating had to be redone on the one at Calvine Road at the railroad tracks there. And it's like, gosh, we just built that, you know, like 12, 15 years ago, and we're all having, you know, we're spending $800,000. Again, those things may be unavoidable, they're part of keeping the system in good repair, but I, I want to have a real serious examination about where we are with capital projects and certainly with what we continue to take on. In light of the bonded debt we took on for the major project, again, which was a, you know, wise move as far as the Freeport facility, because what I see is, is, you know, continued and constant impact to raise, raise fees. And that, you know, that ends up with the five of us having to do this, a water agency board. And some of us have more of the service areas that are covered by the county than others on this board. And I can tell you, when their bills come through and they continue to see those rates go up year in and year out, in a lot of cases, their, I think, unhappiness continues to grow. I mean, obviously get important service and it's important to their property values and their quality of life. But I just want to, David, not so much for anything you need to respond to, but just put that out there, because I know we're going to see that in a couple of weeks. And to me though, this is a big piece of it, is that, you know, what we take on, the expenditure we make initially, but then, then we got to keep it, you know, keep it functional and, and, and that requires ongoing costs that I think sometimes we don't, we, we look at water rates or we look at, you know, volume, and then we get conservation measures that then squeeze us on that end, and the next thing we know, we're having to go out to those, to our customer base again, and again, and again, with rate increases. And that's troublesome in my mind, so. Okay, anyway, no questions about the projects, so, thanks. All right.
Thank you.
That was it.
Okay. I mean, no, I know Dave Dickinson's here, certainly if there was any question on animal care, or is there anybody from libraries, any?
Yes.
We got, we got, yes.
Yes, Mike Norris can handle library.
Supervisor Frost had a question first. I don't know if it's...
You're up.
Yes, I had a question relating to unfunded libraries and the, specifically the Orangevale Library. The constituents in Orangevale are really excited about having a library. And in recent couple of months, have asked me to replace the sign out in front of the community center to keep the dream alive and have shared with me about how Orangevale, I guess, dating back to Supervisor Nilo, which I think was three or four supervisors ago, had stated that Orangevale is underserved because they don't have a library. And so my question, I have a question relating to the numbers that were presented here under unfunded libraries. It looks like, I, I thought there was $5 million that had already been set aside that was waiting for a possible potential future bond measure that might come to build their library. I'm pretty sure that isn't likely to happen, but is there $5 million already set aside? Because it looks by these numbers that $5 million is to be set aside in 2018, 19, and then in 1920.
Jeff Gasway with General Services. There is $5 million of fixed asset acquisition funding set aside already. We're short $5 million of additional funding to complete the project, which would need to come in some way, shape, or form in the future.
So the numbers here are suggesting that we're, we're going to set aside more than another $10 million in the next four years. Is that correct or am I looking at it wrong?
It's a little misleading. I think when we did the unfunded tab, we moved the project sheet over without changing where the funding was supposed to be spent in fiscal years. So realistically, right now, you have about $500,000, $5,750,000 of funding for the project, and $5 million is unfunded.
So one of, one of the things that the community mentioned was that they really wanted to have this library at this community center site. They felt like that would be a place where everyone would gather and that would be the logical place. But they've also suggested that apparently there were issues with engineering and there was added cost because of the hill there. I guess my question is, is there another location on that site that, that something could be built that so it would cost less? That's my first question. And I have the impression, I mean, do we know this is going to happen in the next four years? Or is this just out there and it might happen? Because if it just might happen, I wonder if it's possible to look at some options relating to purchasing a building and repurposing it. The community seems like they don't have to have a brand-new $10 million library, they just, they want a library. Would it be less expensive to, to look at that option and maybe approach the community and see if that might be an opportunity where we could get them a library sooner?
The first part of the question I'm going to tackle is the unfunded page. The reason it's in the unfunded category is because we don't have total funding to move forward with the project. It, it may not happen in the next four years until we get the money, I don't know when that'll come in. As far as the second part of your question and looking for other facilities in the community, we have done that. There were a couple of potential opportunities, one of which it just didn't pan out, it was, it wasn't feasible because of the site and the modifications to the site for access to the, to the building. And we could look at that again if that's what you desired and come up with some different potential locations in that area and have some conversations with you about that and the community.
That, I would like that. I'd, I'd like to have that, maybe do some, have our real estate department look again, because there are some blighted areas, some businesses that have closed down since, in the last year or two. And also then maybe have that conversation with the community to see, you know, maybe we can, maybe we can make this happen with less money. How great would that be?
We can do that. We'll, we'll look in that general area for some other sites and we'll schedule an appointment with you to discuss that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Any other questions of Jeff?
Nope.
Oh, good, thanks, Jeff. Okay, I didn't have anybody signed up to speak or any other questions by board members on this item? If not, then we're going to break down the motions and I...
Yes, I would like to move that we adopt the CIP, but exclude, exclude the projects related to Mather. And the slide on the screen, which is much too small to read, is a list of...
It's getting bigger as you speak.
Those are the projects that are excluded in my motion.
Okay.
So everything but those.
We'll take those separately.
Yes.
Okay, so that's a motion to move all the items with the exception of those that are noted on the screen, 1A through E.
Second.
Okay, moving seconded. Any further questions or comments? This will then refer this to planning commission, we'll see this back later this summer. Okay, please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
All right, then chair would move the balance of the items, Mather Airport, Regional Parks, Transportation, Water Resources, and Water Resources, items that were called out, so.
Second.
Okay, let's move the seconded, please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
Oh, Ms. Peters, I think...
Peters, you need to recuse yourself.
Ms. Peters wanted to recuse herself, I think you wanted to recuse yourself on this one, Susan. This was the Mather item?
Oh.
Yeah, you wanted to recuse yourself, so re-vote it.
Re-vote.
Sorry.
That's right, no, I know, I know.
I should have stayed in bed, didn't I?
So technically, you're...
So technically, you're not present.
Yeah, technically, you're right.
There we go.
So, and the motion passes with Supervisor Peters recusing herself and Supervisor Serna is absent.
All right. Thanks to all who will prepare the document that we're here to respond today. And again, appreciate the work. I know it takes a lot to put this together. If we just had a few more $100 million, we could take care of a lot of it. So binder would shrink. Maybe it would, I don't know. Okay. With that, we just got a couple of items remaining on the, or at least one more item on the morning agenda.
We have one more item, item 70, appointments to the advisory committee for the Lower American River Conservancy Program.
Okay. Mr. Leatherman, back again.
Back again, members of the board, Jeff Leatherman, Director of Regional Parks. And this is a follow-up item on the governor's signature to our Assembly Bill 1716, which formed the American River Parkway Conservancy Program. As an element of that program, your board has the opportunity to elect three representatives to sit on the advisory committee on behalf of the county. Those individuals would then also have the opportunity to select, designate, should you choose, if you were to be on that board. I can answer any questions. Other than that, leave you to your deliberations.
Okay, so then are we being asked today to actually nominate from our own ranks? Or is that, we'll come back to it later?
You are.
We are being asked to do that, so, okay.
Three of us.
That's correct, three of you.
Okay, I guess the only thing is, is that, again, maybe everybody has an idea in mind, but we're down one member who may have a distinct interest, and maybe that's everybody's inclination, but I know all of us have some engagement with the...
I mean, clearly Phil's got a huge stake here, so just appoint him without...
And clearly Peters does, too.
Right, no, I know. I know what I'm talking about, because he's...
Well, I was just going to suggest that, again, depending upon, again, and we all touch it in one way or the other, we have portions of our districts, sort of in terms of Riverway, you know...
I've got the fewest number, so I'll remove myself in consideration.
And I have a pretty good stretch, but certainly Supervisor Frost is up in the upper reaches as well with Folsom and Orangeville as well, so.
If it's helpful on the information side, 1716 only applies to the Lower American River Parkway from Hazel down. So if you were looking at it from a property percentage basis, District 3, District 5, and District 1 have the majority of that acreage, if you will.
Okay, yeah. So we just have a touch of it with Supervisor Frost?
That's correct. They're in and around Hazel from approximately Sunrise upwards to Hazel.
I could nominate you two and Phil Serna if that's appropriate.
Okay. All right. All right, it's been moved seconded then to nominate from our own ranks Supervisor Serna, Peters, and Natoli serve on the advisory committee for the Lower American River Conservancy Program. And if there's nothing further, do we, any else?
No.
Okay, all right, please vote.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch the second.
Mr. Kennedy.
Thank you. Unanimous vote with those members present.
Okay, that was easy. All right. With that, then, that concludes the morning's agenda. I don't have any off-agenda speakers. Morning, agenda, we do have closed session with a afternoon start back at 2:00, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, with that, then, we're going to stand in adjournment to closed session and be back here at 2:00 for the remaining portion of the agenda. And this is the afternoon session. We had quite a lengthy morning session and got a couple of items of good substance this afternoon as well. And before we get started, just would note that if you wish to address any item on the agenda, either published items or items not on the agenda, ask you to fill out a speaker identification form and make sure you get it to Flo Evans, our clerk, and she'll get it to me and we'll call upon you at the appropriate time. And so with that being said and getting started with the afternoon session, Flo, call the role if you would, please, to establish a quorum.
Yes, good afternoon. Supervisor Serna, Kennedy.
Here.
Peters, Frost.
Here.
Natoli.
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Thanks. I just would know for the record, too, in the event that you weren't here this morning, some of you weren't, Supervisor Serna is out of town today, so we are operating with four board members. And I understand that Supervisor Peters will probably join us later this afternoon for the next item. So we've got a quorum, though, and we can press forward with the action at hand. And with that, go ahead and call the first item and we'll get started.
Okay. Item 71 is the public hearing to consider adopting a resolution accepting groundwater sustainability agency responsibility for sub-basin areas within Sacramento County remaining unmanaged on June 30, 2017.
Okay, good. Thanks, Flo. Carrie Schmitz, you're up.
Hello. Good afternoon.
Good morning.
Waiting for my board presentation. Good afternoon, Chair Natoli and members of the board. Carrie Schmitz, I'm with the Department of Water Resources. Today, I'm returning to your board as a follow-up to our March 1 presentation on the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act. I'm asking that your board conduct a public hearing and consider authorizing staff to take the necessary actions to accept groundwater sustainability agency or GSA management responsibilities for those areas in the county that remain unmanaged on June 30, 2017. So before I ask that your board open the public hearing, I'll quickly review some of the information provided at the March 1 board workshop. SIGMA was passed in 2014 and became effective in January of 2015. SIGMA requires that all areas within California sub-basins are managed by GSAs by June 30, 2017. Areas that are unmanaged after this date are subject to state intervention, which includes extraction reporting and associated fees. Counties can accept GSA responsibility for areas within the county that are otherwise unmanaged. So as we've discussed before, there are four groundwater sub-basins in Sacramento County. The North American Basin is north of the American River and includes parts of Placer and Sutter County. The South American Subbasin is between the American and Casumnas Rivers and is wholly within Sacramento County. The Casumnas Subbasin is south of the Casumnas River and includes a portion of Amador County. And the Solano Subbasin includes the Delta portion of Sacramento County. So this slide shows the proposed and exclusive GSAs in Sacramento County at this time. Sacramento Groundwater Authority, or SGA, is the exclusive GSA over the North American Subbasin. Sacramento Central Groundwater Authority is the exclusive GSA over the majority of the South American Subbasin, with the exception of the Slough House Resource Conservation District and Oma Chumney-Hardnell Water District overlap areas and the area to the west, roughly to the west of Interstate 5, which is currently unmanaged. The Casumnas Subbasin so far has three exclusive GSAs, Oma Chumney-Hardnell, Slough House Resource Conservation District, and Galt Irrigation District are all exclusive at this time. City of Galt and Clay Water District are in the process of becoming GSAs. And in Solano, in the Solano Subbasin, there are no GSAs in the Sacramento County portion of this basin at this time. So this slide shows the three large unmanaged areas in Sacramento County currently. There are unmanaged areas in three out of the four sub-basins in the county, the Solano, the Casumnas, and the South American Subbasins. In the following slides, I'll talk more specifically about each area and the outreach that staff has done in these areas to date. So in the Solano Subbasin, staff has been working with Resource Conservation District representatives as well as stakeholders from Solano County. RCD representatives have expressed a desire to have a role in groundwater management but are not in a position currently to form GSAs. They would like to work with county staff moving forward with a vision of forming their own GSA or GSAs in the future. RCD representatives have expressed support for the county's involvement while they determine their future management role. In the unmanaged area of the South American Subbasin, county staff have worked with Resource Conservation District representatives who are interested in groundwater management. You can see there are a number of RCDs in this area. They, too, support the county's involvement while they determine the appropriate management So far, no eligible entities have expressed interest in becoming a GSA in the unmanaged portion of the Casumnas Subbasin. On March 15, the Water Forum hosted an outreach event for stakeholders in this area to receive input from residents on SIGMA. Attendees expressed concern over the impending June 30, 2017 deadline and the expressed concern with county involvement, but also expressed a strong desire to avoid state intervention. A summary of the stakeholder input received at the meeting has been distributed to the attendees, and you each have received a copy of that document. County staff, in collaboration with the Water Forum, will continue the dialogue with these stakeholders moving forward and will continue the dialogue with each of the sub-basins as we move forward towards June 30.
Carrie, can I ask if we leave that slide in the, kind of the lower right-hand portion? You saw the City of Galt presumed GSA, but there are some pockets there, and particularly the one in the southern portion of Galt there as you, between city limits and the Sacramento San Juan County line.
Right.
I know some of those folks were present at the meeting, the meeting was held middle part of last month. And so by making that particular designation there, I mean, that's an unincorporated area pocket. It's not just...
Right. That's correct.
And some of those folks, again, have long expressed a desire to remain in the unincorporated area and have had interactions with the City of Galt on land use matters and annexations. And I think have been very clear about, at least, perspective of a majority of those residents in that area, which doesn't have, you know, a large number of people there. But so how do we presume the City of Galt? Because there has been some difference of opinion on land use matters, and I think they were there representing folks who were on wells and obviously have an interest in this matter. And I know, actually, as I mentioned to you before the meeting, received a call from one of the parties who, you know, was contemplating attending today and may be in attendance. But I think that that presumption for us to even say that at this point in time, if that's what that arrow is pointing to, I don't know that it is. Maybe it's just kind of the directional modality of your arrows.
The directional.
Okay, so is that...
Those areas are still in the unincorporated counties, so they would be in the county GSA.
Right. And not presumed to be in the Galt GSA. Galt could apply, and that would be taken into consideration. But right now, they're going to be in this, actions before us during, okay, I just want to be clear about that.
Yeah. Sorry for the confusion.
That's right, it's not. I just, looking at the diagram there was what kind of led me to the question, so.
Right.
Okay, thanks.
So today, we're asking your board to hold a public hearing and consider accepting GSA responsibility for unmanaged areas in the county. Today's action will authorize staff to take the necessary actions to accept GSA management responsibility for any areas in the county that remain unmanaged on June 30. County will withdraw or amend their application if another eligible entity expresses interest or submits to become a GSA in the county's management area. And the county board of supervisors will act as interim governance body until a different governance body is established. And as we talked about in March, this action will help avoid state intervention, which includes extraction reporting and associated fees. And it will also allow time for us to work with eligible entities to eventually assume governance responsibilities. So at this time, I ask your board to open the public hearing, consider any public testimony, close the public hearing, and adopt the resolution accepting GSA management responsibility for these areas. This meeting has been noticed as required by SIGMA. In addition, the hearing announcement was distributed to those on the email distribution list for each of the groundwater sub-basin groups. And the hearing was disclosed at relevant groundwater meetings as well. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay. Thank you, Carrie. Any questions by my colleagues on this? Okay, you did a very thorough job in covering it and want to thank you for certainly your work in this area and certainly many of the folks in the audience and some that aren't able to join with us have been in attendance at meetings of the board, but certainly in community meetings, and I think have been a part of a very important conversation, but certainly a very important work that hopefully will lend itself to the local management and oversight and responsibility. And I guess I would just characterize this somewhat like I was characterized in the meeting we had a few weeks ago with landowners and other interested parties down in the Galt area, that, you know, I see certainly our responsibility, one is not to assure that the state doesn't intervene, as in Allen's staff report, but secondly, that, you know, we have a, you know, kind of a holding, you know, pattern here and that, you know, we certainly have the ability to oversee if no one steps forward, but also it wasn't to preempt anyone, you know, either local, other local districts and/or landowners if they chose to form another entity. But recognizing that some of those things can take time, either through a LAFCO process and/or organizational process. And so in the meantime, to assure that we have local decision-making and certainly reflected in this board, but in working with constituents throughout the county, but certainly in those areas that are unmanaged thus far, that we wanted, you know, to be sure that, again, we maintain that local ability to do so, so. Okay, if there's no questions, then this is a public hearing. I don't have anyone sign up to speak. I know a number of folks in the audience that have been tracking this matter. It looks like Stephanie's bringing something forward. Okay, I do have one speaker, so I'm going to declare the public hearing open. Anyone who wishes to address item 71, I have some speakers from item 72, which is the next item. But the groundwater item is invited to come forward or submit a form, but I'll call on the one person I do have signed up, and that's Hans Peter Walter. Hans Peter?
Good afternoon, board. Hans Peter Walter.
You can raise that podium, Flo. He can raise that, so it doesn't have to get you, get a crook in your neck.
Oh, wow.
You should know how to do that, buddy.
I didn't know that I was somebody who was entitled to accommodations because of my height disability. Anyway, good afternoon. Hans Peter Walter, attorney for Slough House Resource Conservation District. I think the county is making a good move today. The district supports the county's endeavors to cover these white space areas where there's no other or not a willing currently public agency to take management responsibility. It's a necessary step in the Casumnas Subbasin. The Conservation District looks forward to working with the county and enjoying some of the county's leadership and technical, financial capabilities to assist with efforts in that sub-basin. I would suggest, though, the one thing I would caution or suggest requires perhaps some thought is the concept that the county would elect to take this responsibility for governance over these white space areas, elect to become GSA, begin interacting with the other GSA members in these areas, and then at some point, from the bullet points, it suggested there's almost this open blank check to step out at the first sign of somebody else who's willing, another public agency who's willing to come in and assume GSA duties. And I would suggest that the county is certainly qualified, competent to do that. And if decisions begin being made, relationships get built, an MOU or something gets signed as things move forward in the next six to 10 months, it's not so simple perhaps to just say, well, the county will back out and step aside at the drop of a hat, the first sign somebody else comes up. That might be more complicated, and I would suggest possibly you might not want to write a blank check that the county would do that. But again, it's a future event that I think would require some serious thought, depending on the circumstances when that arose. That's the only comment I have.
Okay.
But we support the resolution and look forward to working with the county.
Thank you, thank you for those comments. I would just say, too, I don't, just reflecting on your comments, Hans Peter, and thought about this, too, that it's not some immediate exit. And I think, again, if there are viable entities that, you know, reflect, obviously, landowner interest and the organizational structure to, you know, go forward and do the planning, obviously, and... structure to, you know, go forward and do the planning, obviously, and future implementation that may be required of them, we want to be an assist in this. Because if you do, you read the language here, and it sounds like county will withdraw, amend if another entity submits, and I think Carrie, the characterization by Carrie was one that, you know, we're willing to accept utter governance models for those areas. On the other hand, I think we do need to be deliberate and be conscientious about not only those that are already going to be in under their own GSAs, but certainly the county's role. The county would have a role anyway, in some respect, and so I appreciate your comments in that regard, and I think it wasn't intended that somehow, well, we got, you know, Joe and company's interested, so now we don't have to do anything. No, I don't, it's not like that. We're going to have to stay engaged, so. Good, thanks. Okay, also, we have Jay Schneider, and Jay's the only other one I've signed up, so if there's anyone else who wishes to address the groundwater issue in the public hearing, now's the time to get your speaker form, and otherwise Jay will be... And it will lower as well.
Second slide up there, by any chance?
You want to get another slide up there, Jay, you said?
Yeah, if it's possible, the slide that said proposed areas, I think it was the second one.
Second slide. Carrie, is there a way to bring those slides back?
Yeah.
One more, that one.
Okay, good. Thanks, Flo.
Hello, Jay Schneider, and I'm the Chairman of the Slough House Resource Conservation District. And first of all, the Slough House RC District's position has been that each of the white areas should decide for themselves how they want to be, who wants to be a GSA within them. For those that you might not know, everybody has to have a, every area has to have a groundwater sustainability agency made up of local agencies that can do it, or the county has to step in, or the state will. So you're stepping in now for those white areas where there was no other district that could or would do it, and that's great, and we certainly support that, because otherwise it's been planned out the state would come in. We have, in that, once the, there was discussion here today about the governance and the, hopefully the way the groundwater plan out there will occur, is once these GSAs are all formed, one of them will be the county, then that group will work together, hopefully like they did to do the Central, and create a groundwater sustainability plan, which is the new term for a groundwater management plan, and that once that plan's developed, then a governmental, governing board or jurisdiction somehow will be created. Governance will be created after you know what you're going to govern. That's what they did with the Central. They created the plan, and then after the plan was created, they created the Sacramento Central Groundwater Authority to oversee it and implement it. So it might not be unrealistic that the county would stay in this position, in other words, until such time as that new governing agency would occur after the plan is developed. But in any event, hopefully, a local jurisdiction of some sort would be able to do it ultimately. I would like to add, though, for everybody else that doesn't know, this doesn't solve the big elephant in the room in groundwater management in this county, is what happens along the Casumnees River watershed. Those areas up there, west of the Casumnees River, basically represent the watershed line, and we have a very big, not only overlap on who wants to be the jurisdiction, it's a battle between urban and rural. The rural representatives have been locked out, which has been like Old Man Johnny Hartno Water District, and the South Sacramento Agricultural Authority, and the Slough House Resource Conservation District. And the Centrals, just for the, so the board knows, I'm glad you come back here and get these updates, because the local jurisdictions oppose the Centrals circumventing the law and taking over that area and denying the local representatives the opportunity to create a plan on that area. I'm talking about the Casumnees watershed. Local environmental groups like Ecos also object. Regional environmental groups, the Casumnees River watershed groups, object. State organizations such as the Department of Fish and Wildlife object. Indian tribes object. There is no support for it except from Sacramento Central themselves. And it's important for this board to understand that this is a huge problem in this, to create... For those of you who don't know, the sustainability plan is going to have to end up with a sustainable number. How much water can you pump annually? And right now, there's no accurate numbers on what's available in the Casumnees Basin, as certainly a Casumnees Basin that doesn't include historically the whole watershed. So big problems coming down the way in governance of that watershed. How do you get the environmental groups and everybody together so you can create a single plan on both sides of the river? I'm probably not explaining this well. There's not enough time, and that's not the purpose of this hearing. But I'm giving you a lot of awareness that there's big problems, and I hope that as board members, you stay aware that the rest of the county has worked out these differences in the past, but we've ran up to a brick wall trying to resolve these differences on the Casumnees watershed at this point in time. But there's light at the end of the tunnel, we're hoping. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jay. Appreciate your comments as well. And with that, then Jay is the only other speaker I had. Anyone else wish to address the board on the groundwater management proposal? All right, seeing none, then I'll bring it back to the board, close the public hearing, and I guess just would offer one comment, I think, to Jay's point, but I know this, certainly staff and this board have stayed on track where we do have periodic reports. I would suggest maybe after the post-budget and after maybe the summer break, to come back maybe in the July timeframe, at that point in time, we will, you know, be into the next calendar phase, at least as it relates to structure, and work will continue, and obviously some of the things that, you know, Jay referenced, you know, may have sorted themselves out, or at least be in a, you know, in a position to be better understood and worked out. So I guess I would suggest we carry this over in the calendar and get a report back on groundwater, you know, nothing else, a status update as to where we are. So I think it's really healthy, and for the broader community as well, those that aren't in attendance necessarily, but have a chance to know what's going on, so. Okay, all right, any questions, Ms. Ross or Mr. Kennedy? If not, then with that, I would move the staff recommendation, noting that we had a public hearing, and would adopt an attached resolution which would adopt the recommendations outlined in Carrie's report. So if nothing further, please vote. We have a second?
Second.
Okay, second, yep, I'll get that before we voted. Okay.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
Okay. Thank you all very much on that item, and now we'll get to item 72. And I see we've got folks that have assembled. I have, just item 72, I have a couple of folks sign up, but if you're here to speak to the marijuana ordinance and zoning code matter, please fill out speaker form and get them to our clerk and one of the assistants, and we'll call upon you as we get into...
Mr. Natale, we have about a forum and a gap. Did you guys want to do items 73, 74, 75?
Yeah, we can do our appointments, because this was a 2:30 hearing, so we've got a few minutes before you start that, so we'll go and take care of another item while we wait the, take it o'clock to 2:30, so.
Okay, thank you. For item 73, I do have a title correction, and the new title is Recommendation to Remove Members From the Antelope Community Planning Advisory Council for Failure to File Statement of Economic Interest, Form 700.
What's the new title?
That is the corrected title.
Well, that is correct. Oh, to remove, okay, okay.
Related to the Statement of Economic Interest.
Okay.
So move approval.
Okay. And I just would note as well, Ms. Ross, just in the event there's some deference certainly to the supervisor district, particularly planning advisory councils, that sometimes there's some extenuating circumstances where folks don't get their forms in even though they're required to, and if you were so inclined, obviously made a motion to approve this, we will show deference to members to allow them to reach out, because oftentimes those appointments have come through a process where the district supervisor has vetted the members of the CPAC, so just for future reference, if that was of interest to you to...
Yeah, we did have some review and discussion of this, and I think it was more than just the filing of the forum. There were some meetings missed and...
Okay, very good. Okay, so we have a motion, a second, then, to approve the item, the re-titled item, which is to basically vacate that seat on the CPAC for failure to file. Okay, with that, then, if there's nothing further, this is item 73, Ms. Peters, this is on the Antelope Community Planning Advisory Council. There's an appointment where the parties did not file the required 730 form, or 700 form, excuse me, 7... We're voting to vacate the seat. Okay, please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
Okay.
Okay, and for item 74, I am asking the board to drop this agenda from the, drop this item from the agenda, and also, for the record, want to note that there is a title correction. The corrected title is Recommendation to Remove Members From the Adult and Aging Commission for Failure of Participation Pursuant to the Bylaws of the Adult and Aging Commission.
So are we voting on, we're voting to drop this?
Voting to drop.
Okay. We've been seconded to drop this item. I had no one time to speak on these items. All right, please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present. Okay.
Okay.
And then for your nominations, this will be really quick. For today, for continuing to May 9th, the Equal Employment Opportunity Advisory Committee, the Local Childcare Planning and Development Council, and the Sacramento County Youth Commission. For your matters today, the first one is the Arden Arcade Community Planning Advisory Council.
Please continue to April 25th.
Okay. Assessment Appeals Board. Ms. Natale?
Yes, we have, the interviews were conducted, and we have recommendation from the Chiefs of Staff recommending the nomination of Maurice Thomas to the general public seat, and continue the remainder to May 23rd.
Thank you. Next is the Casumnees Area Community Planning Advisory Council.
And I nominate John Merchant and James Moore for reappointment.
Okay, and then District 5 applicants for any vacant seats, we're going to continue to those. We don't have any current applicants, continue those to May 23rd.
Developmental Disabilities Planning and Advisory Council.
Okay, we have a note to continue, there's an pending interview with one of the parties applied for the parent seat, so continue that to April 25th.
Okay.
And I guess we're still seeking applicants for professional seat on that body as well.
Disability Advisory Commission.
We have no applicants for the designated disabled seat. Would nominate, based upon Chief's recommendation, interviews William Falai for the general seat and continue the remainder to May 23rd.
Public Health Advisory Board.
Okay, we have four of those having all been interviewed. We have recommended by Chiefs of Staff, Stephen Heath, community member, Jofeele Borja, community member, Jack Zwalk, community member, and Felicia Bay, public health, a health member.
Great. And then we have the Sacramento County Mental Health Board. Mr. Natale, will you be covering District 1?
Okay, no applicants for District 1, no applicants for District 4.
I had a note here that District 1 was making a recommendation on Dimitri. Is that different from your note?
Right, I was going to appoint to, I was going to nominate District, I think we'd spoken with District 2, gentleman resides in District 2, but not done necessarily by District, and I'm prepared to nominate him for District 5 seat, that would be Dimitri Godmanier.
Got it.
Family, I'm not sure, you know, if we can hold that over, let's hold that over for, till April 25th. I want to make sure, we get, you can either be a family member or consumer, and I guess we got a couple of applicants. So rather than get into that today, let's hold that over till April 25th.
So we'll hold also on the nomination for?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha. Okay. And then Sacramento area, South Sacramento area Community Planning Advisory Council?
Continue to May 9th.
Okay, and that concludes your nominations.
Okay, very good.
Okay, so now...
Okay, now back to item 72. It's now, it's 2:30.
Now we're ready for item 72. It's the Marijuana Ordinance Request to Adopt a Zoning Code Amendments to Chapter 3 and Chapter 7 of the Zoning Code related to commercial marijuana activities and personal marijuana cultivation. You are introducing an ordinance, and then waiving full reading and continuing to April 25th for adoption.
Okay, and I'm going to invite Leanne to start this off in just a moment. I just want to note for those in the audience, I have a couple of folks that have signed up. If you wish to speak to this, once staff report is completed and we hear from, if those are presenting, and any questions by board members, then we'll open up to the public for comments. And as I said, I have a couple of you who've signed up, and if there are others who wish to do that, please fill out speaker form, and we'll call upon you in the order I receive those, so. Okay, with that, I'll turn to, I guess, Leanne. You're going to get off, or any opening comments by Mr. Gill or Mr. Leonard? Okay?
All right. Good afternoon, members of the board. Leanne Moffett, your county planning director. I am here to present the staff recommendations related to zoning code and county code changes regarding the regulating and permitting of marijuana. I want to start off with a few introductions. Along with myself, I have Kate Rose with Planning who's here to support us from county council specifically. In addition to your county council, we have Susie Mazarway, who's done a lot of the heavy lifting on the ordinance preparation and details. I want to thank the following individuals who also came to the Planning Commission in support of this item and spoke, including the district attorney, Anne Marie Schubert, who is here today, also prepared to speak to you. From the sheriff, we have Chief Deputy Phil Brelji, Anne Marie Wooden, and Jason Bateser from Environmental Management. They all spoke and supported the item at the Planning Commission. Also here today, if there are any questions or issues, we have Barry Chamberlain with Code Enforcement, and Robert Logsdon and Robin Rasmussen from Building Permits and Inspection. So that's the staff collection here specifically.
And Julie Jensen, our ag commissioner.
And, I'm sorry, Julie Jensen, the ag commissioner. Thank you very much. Sorry, did I forget anybody else? Regarding outreach, we have had a website with a large distribution list that we have been using. We did a press release. We have informed the Community Planning Advisory Councils about this via email, and we did hold a hearing before the Planning Commission that I will speak to later, where we heard testimony from about 10 individuals, although there were far more than that in attendance at the Planning Commission. So starting here with some of the background information, just to remind your board, you have touched upon this subject several times in the past, initially adopting an interim urgency ordinance back in 2011, but then in 2014, you adopted ordinance changes to prohibit all outdoor marijuana cultivation and to limit indoor medical marijuana cultivation to no more than nine plants. And in 2015, when you updated the overall development code, you continued a statement in there about prohibiting items relating to federal law, but you relied more on the county's permissive zoning system and didn't actually put a line item in there about marijuana. And so this item, these code amendments are intended to address that and go beyond just that lack of saying anything. So originally, back in 2015, voters adopted the Medical Cannabis Regulation and Safety Act, MCRSA, but more recently, the voters adopted Prop 64, the Adult Use of Marijuana Act, AUMA, or ALMA, passed by the voters, and that addressed recreational use. So Prop 64 allows local governments to determine how to regulate retail sales and cultivation of marijuana, and sets guidelines for state agencies to establish a licensing system and regulatory framework for the cultivation, manufacture, transport, testing, and sale of recreational marijuana. So the state will, agencies will essentially issue, renew, discipline, suspend, or revoke licenses for marijuana businesses. Businesses are not required to obtain a local permit or authorization before being issued a state license, but if the locals have adopted an ordinance that does not allow for the commercial cultivation or dispensary or anything else, then the state will not issue a license. So if the locals do nothing, the state can issue a license. If the locals are permissive, the state can issue a license, but if the local ordinance does not allow that commercial use, then the state will not issue a license. They are to begin issuing licenses by January 2018, and they are still drafting the numerous regulations and ordinances to be available at the, around, they're supposed to be issued around the end of summer of 2017, so a lot of that is still being undertaken. The current zoning code and county codes inadequately address the provisions. The current zoning code and county codes inadequately address the provisions, and need some modifications, which is why we are here today. Staff also recognizes that it's a very complex environment, and a very fluid environment, and that the state has not yet had time to set in place their regulatory structure, and there's also a certain level of uncertainty about how the federal government is going to react. So we have proposed a number of zoning code amendments, the item that was just passed out to you, the printed materials that were loaded online, one of the tables cut off a part of the table, so we wanted to make sure that you had the full version of the table.
You said the table, so if somebody went to the online, the table would have been?
There's a little bit of a corner of the table that is, was, when it got PDFed, is not entirely visible.
Okay, are there some copies of this in the back of the room?
Yes, Kate has extra copies for anybody who would like a copy.
Okay, somebody in the audience didn't get a copy, if you wanted to see what was left off from the online edition, I see Carla and others may want a copy, so, okay, all right, thanks.
So we wanted to make sure we had copies, just a little bit of the table was not visible. So the overall approach that staff is recommending today is to basically hold steady with the direction that we have previously received from the board, in the context of contemplating recreational marijuana, and to prohibit the commercial, sorry, prohibit commercial marijuana activities, and we define that as cultivation, manufacture, processing, laboratory testing, distribution or delivery, and sales of marijuana or marijuana products, but to continue to allow personal marijuana cultivation as an accessory use to a primary residence, subject to compliance with the Sacramento County Code. So that is, we're basically not distinguishing between medical and recreational here, we're basically saying you had, you could do nine plants for medical before, now you can do nine plants regardless of whether it's medical or recreational, and you can have those as required by state law, but not at this point to contemplate commercial activities.
Just a question for you, LeAnn, so under your bullet points there, or slash lines, under manufacturing, processing, then that also prohibits baking, production of edibles, those types of ventures, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
The county code amendments complement the zoning code amendments, and they have a number of provisions about managing the personal cultivation, as required by state law, so cultivation would not be allowed outdoors, it would, in the, state law allows you to go as low as six, but we are recommending to stick with the current nine plants, so a little bit more than the minimum set under state law. The cultivation would have to occur within a fully enclosed and secure structure, and inaccessible to minors, the primary use must remain as a residence, so you can't just turn a house into, only for growing marijuana. Cultivation cannot be visible from the public right of way, lighting, plumbing, and electrical must comply with building and fire codes, and for units that are rental units, we need to see a written notarized consent of the property owner, and we will be trying to work with the Rental Housing Association to get additional information to rental owners out there. So, a number of those details are in your attachments, if you want to read the specific language, because that language is provided there. So the staff recommendations today are to adopt the ordinance, amending Chapters 3 and 7 of the zoning code, to waive full reading, recognize the exempt status of the request pursuant to SEQA. The Planning Commission did review and hear this item, and spent some time on it, they are recommending approval on a four to zero vote, one member had a planned absence. The Planning Commission did also want to convey their recommendation that the board should revisit medical access in particular, once the state has issued their regulations, and after some of the uncertainty is worked out. So that was one note I wanted to pass on. With regard to other comments, we have actually not received a lot of late-breaking comments. We, there was correspondence sent to the board and to staff by ETTI, one of the unions representing code enforcement. Staff has discussed that comment letter, and we do have Barry Chamberlain here. We recognize some of the concerns expressed there in that letter. We do note, however, that the regulatory scheme that we are proposing to the board does not represent a change, particularly in what the county is allowing, it recognizes what state law has done with regard to recreational use, but basically, we're continuing to do the same thing we have been, which is to not allow commercial, and continue to allow nine plants. So this has been the approach the county has taken for quite a number of years, and we will continue to work with code enforcement staff to address security concerns that they may have, to try to make sure we have sheriff officers available to accompany them if there's any unsafe circumstances. So, that pretty much concludes my portion of the presentation.
Okay. Thank you, LeAnn, let me ask board members, do they have any questions at this juncture?
Nope.
All right, no questions, and with our presentation, thank you for the summary. Is there any other county staff, I know we have our district attorney, Anne Marie Schubert here, and other representatives, anyone else wish to, or is LeAnn speak for the group?
I had indicated, I thought Supervisor Natale, that you might want to hear from Anne Marie Schubert, and possibly the sheriff at your discretion.
Okay, yeah, well, that may be a good idea, if they wouldn't mind briefly just, you know, either supplementing and/or adding anything of additional relevance to consideration here, I'll just say that in previous discussions before this board, prior to the passage of Prop 64, when we talked about how the county was going to handle the indoor and outdoor grows, certainly, District Attorney Schubert, and Sheriff Jones and his staff were very much engaged in those conversations, hence we have the nine plants that were permitted in indoor grows, and prohibitions for outdoor grows, but again, I want to appreciate, I appreciate again in my comments, the work both of them do in law enforcement, but certainly their contributions to this, along with other county staff, as we have this matter before us today, so Anne Marie, I'll start with you.
Thank you, members of the board, appreciate your opportunity, let me talk to you today. I think it's probably no shock to this board that I did not support Prop 64. However, with that being said, we accept what the voters approved, which is the recreational use of marijuana, but with that, obviously, you know that it was left to local jurisdictions to decide what kind of regulations you want to impose. So my comments today are very similar to what I said, both on Prop 64, as well as to the Planning Commission, and I'm sure that Chief Brelji will parallel some of my comments. Obviously, from a public safety point of view, the most primary concern is what impact will the commercialization of marijuana have on the county of Sacramento? And I come at it from, not just a prosecutor, but a parent, but I also come at it from a homeowner in the unincorporated area of Sacramento County. So the concerns we have, which are pretty, pretty basic, are what is going to be the potential increase in crime in our community if we allow for the commercialization? Much of what I say today is not just based upon what I would say is our own institutional knowledge, working in the trenches over the years, but it's also looking at other states that have allowed for the legalization, and I look oftentimes to Colorado to see what's occurred in Colorado, what can we expect here in our community if we allow for the commercialization? So when we talk about public safety, it's not just about possible increases in crimes, it's, it's obviously about the potential of increase in marijuana-related traffic incidents and fatalities, it's about illegal grow operations that we may see, and I'm sure we'll see in Sacramento County, and I'm sure Chief Brelji can mention that. It's also, as a community member, a parent, a prosecutor, is what, if we legalize this in the commercial aspect here, we allow for dispensaries, allow for outdoor grows, we allow for delivery and transportation, what impact will it have on the children of our community? And releasing that stigma, that oftentimes goes with this legalization. So when you look at things like Colorado, what we know from Colorado is that there has been an astronomical increase in illegal grows. If you look at the letters from the district attorney from Denver, you know that there's been massive, massive increase in citations, law enforcement drain on resources for those illegal cultivations. I think one of the most stark realities that we saw in Colorado is that the legalization and the commercialization has had a disproportionate impact on the poorest neighborhoods. So we see things like twice as many pot shops as there are Starbucks in Colorado, and that's a sad state of affairs, in my opinion. But I think it's also, what do we expect for our youth? So if we have dispensaries or pot shops in neighborhoods in Sacramento, what impact will that have on our children, and the potential for them becoming users or addicted to that type of situation? Obviously, public health concerns, we know from other states that there's been increases in number of ER trips, increases of overdoses, increases of children under the age of five that are being exposed to these kinds of things, increases of exposures to animals, of these types of things. We know that the THC content is nowhere near what it was back in the 60s or the 70s, we know it's much, much higher, and has a very negative impact on our community. And then, as a DA, and just really a resident, is what impact will it have on our environment? So the, the impact of pesticides, the impact of diversion of our streams, the impact of illegal dumps that we see all over Sacramento County will only increase. And so those are the particular concerns, and I would ask Chief Brelji, I mean, you know, the other thing about is reminding, everybody knows that we have not had any direction from the current Trump administration on what, what will they do with federal law as it relates to marijuana? And so I believe very strongly that it's premature for us to move forward and try to do this without having some idea of what, what their position will be. And so with that, I just ask Chief Brelji to give his two cents.
Good afternoon, members of the board, Chief Deputy Phil Brelji. I'd just like to kind of, she covered a good portion of that, but I'd just like to say that we are too, as the sheriff's department, are supportive of the ordinance as, as it stands and amended right now. Although I don't think we're going to, we're going to probably remain status quo as far as the current crimes we have related to a lot of marijuana outdoor activities, I think if this was pushed even further, I think you would see a tremendous explosion of those type of crimes. Somebody asked me earlier if we, that this is going to reduce it, I don't necessarily think it's going to reduce it, but I think we can hold status quo, and hopefully do reduce the amount of use we have. Last year, we had 12% of our homicides in 2016 that were marijuana-related, and I think with the, if we went down the road of potentially allowing more plants in a commercialized-type grow, you would see even more of that explosion throughout the county and whatnot. So, as it stands, the sheriff's department does support the ordinance and the amendments as, as written, and we are supportive of it.
Okay, thanks Chief, thanks District Attorney. Schubert, any questions or comments? Supervisor Frost, and Supervisor Peters.
It seems like the sentiment of accepting the idea of marijuana is moving toward marijuana, and, on a local level, and state, and national level, and whether we regulate it or not, if other cities and counties around us choose to commercialize marijuana, then there's no cutoff, those people are going to be driving through our county, and we're going to have those problems associated with that. So, my question to you is, I mean, do you think, I mean, do you think the sheriff needs tools in order to react to, or, you know, enforce, you know, laws and regulations around it, if it's going to be a cost? My understanding is, if we don't regulate it, then we're going to have, we won't have an opportunity for funding that will help pay for some of the problems associated with it. So, I, I support this ordinance, I support holding off, and, and waiting, and kind of sitting back and watching to see where the problems emerge, so that we can make a smart, you know, move forward, but I wonder if you can make a comment regarding that, you know, how it impacts us, even if, even if we, even if we ban marijuana from the county, and we say we're not going to have dispensaries, we're still going to have some of that impact that they have in Colorado's, with public safety and public health, et cetera?
Go ahead, Phil.
I would agree, I think we are in uncharted waters, and I think if Denver's any indication on what's going to happen if it were to be regulated and legalized more in Sacramento County, I think what Denver has shown, that it's going to tremendously increase, as opposed to hopefully staying status quo with what we have. Only time will tell as far as where we go, and what we do, so staying that course, I think is a good, a good strategy, I really do.
And I would just add to that, what they saw in Denver was a 900% increase in unlawful cultivation, and they saw over 3,000 percentage increase in the quantities. And so I think it's an illusion for us to believe that just by, by allowing it, it's going to somehow get rid of the illegal grows, and, and the reality is, is that we may end up having a large number of illegal grows, which becomes a very, very significant drain on law enforcement. And if we hold steady and say we don't want these in our community, then at least the stigma is there. You know, with all due respect, there are some folks in our community that are not going to wake up tomorrow and say that they're going to pay taxes on this, that's not going to happen, they're going to continue on this illegal behavior.
Point taken.
Okay, good, Ms. Peters.
Really, it was more of a comment, first of all, appreciate both of you coming over. To me, very telling in this was the letter from the district attorney of Denver, and I think the first sentence in his letter that I saw said that he had supported the legalization originally, and was thinking that, you know, there would be a lot of tax money raised to address crime, addiction, and that sort of thing, and yet, and now he's completely turned around to being against it, because of these huge increases in crime, children being poisoned, eating mom and dad's edibles at home, that kind of thing. And then I went to a CSAC meeting, it's probably been a year, and the gentleman who runs the, he called himself the Pot Czar, I forget what his official title is, that's easier to remember, and he said they could have taxed marijuana 100% of sale value, and not had enough money to address all of the issues that were created by the, as I said, poisonings and murders and burglaries and car thefts, and addiction problems. So, I, I think sitting back and seeing how it goes is the, is the way to go here. And I appreciate you both being out on the, talking to the various city councils in our county.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just one follow-on question, then, so as I understand it from the information presented to us, and again, you know, the, certainly, the district attorney covers the entirety of the county, and the sheriff, certainly from the standpoint of law enforcement services in the unincorporated area, but also obviously the jail, and a number of other activities has a broader, a broader swath, but that citrusy, elk grove, Folsom, I believe, galt, you didn't have galt in Iltin in your chart, but I believe galt also prohibits dispensaries, is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah.
I don't know, but I don't know where Iltin-
I don't believe they've taken a vote yet.
Okay, all right, so we have Iltin and Ranch Cordova that still have yet to take a vote on prohibition of dispensaries, or at least conformance with Prop 64, is that?
That, that's correct, I believe Ranch Cordova is slated for in May.
Okay, I've just suggested in future, if we talk about municipalities, that we include all of them in our charts in the future, it's important, but I guess my point to, Anne Marie, have you spoken with city leaders, city managers in those communities?
Peripherally, I mean, I knew that they had already taken votes, I knew the city of Sacramento had gone down the path to allow for indoor grows, but it was far down the track for me to get involved in that.
Right, because they permitted up to, I guess, up to 30 dispensaries, the city of Sacramento, and thus far, no other municipality has taken the approach of permitting dispensaries in the county, and certainly this county, with the ordinance before us, would not do it as well, so.
I could be incorrect, but I believe that their 30 dispensaries are for medicinal, and then they put a moratorium on it. I don't know if they voted for recreational dispensaries, I thought that-
Okay, those are for medical, right, for medical, that's an important distinction, absolutely, it's medical marijuana, I don't want to confuse the two, so, as far as recreational, they have not, so, okay. All right, that's all I had, and no further questions, thank you both for, in your departments' agencies for being involved. Okay, any other county staff to present at this point in time? If not, then I do have a handful of speakers, and I'll call them in the next, as I said, in order I receive them, I have Rachel Sutherland, followed by Ricardo Garcia, followed by Tom Misurik, and Carla Lowe, and those are the four speakers I have signed up, if there are others who wish to address the board, please come forward. So Rachel, you want to come forward?
I'll-
Three minutes for your comments.
So, hello Supervisor Natale, and other members of the board, I'd like to first ask you to please excuse me if you have a hard time understanding me, I recently had surgery, jaw surgery, and I have a little bit of a speech impediment because of that, so I'll try to be as clear as possible if you don't understand.
We're hearing you fine, okay, thanks for explaining.
Okay, so, my name is Rachel Sutherland, and I'm a Sacramento County Code Enforcement Officer, I have been a code enforcement officer here in Sacramento County, oh gosh, over 12 years, and in August it'll be 13 years, and I can tell you that, in the course of my employment at the county of Sacramento, I've never felt unsafe in my job, really, unsafe in my job, because there's always been a line, a clear distinction between code enforcement and peace officers, law enforcement, or the sheriff. And a few years ago, we were required- And a few years ago, we were required to start wearing these vests. And I'll put it on for you. It's going to be a little awkward. And I'd like you to just take a look at me now, when I go into the field as an officer, what I look like when I'm doing just zoning code inspections. And I told you it'd be awkward. And vehicle inspections, and it'll be marijuana cultivation inspections once this proposal passes. And we've been doing that for a little while now. And I'd like you to take a look and just tell me whether or not, or just yourselves, I mean, looking at me now, I look like a peace officer now. In the past, when I conducted inspections, I wore, you know, nice pants, a polo with my county shield on it and my identification. And I was never, in the history of my employment, mistaken for a police officer until I began wearing this vest. And now on a daily basis, I am mistaken for a police officer when I'm in the field. And that's not an exaggeration. So if you ask us to do drug enforcement activity work, please understand that although we may dress like police officers, we are not police officers. We're not peace officers. We don't have any, I can tell you, I don't have any type of police officer training. I've never been through any post-academy. I don't take people down. I do zoning code inspections and, you know, public health and safety inspections and nuisance inspections, but I'm not a police officer. So when you ask me to do drug enforcement inspections, you're asking me to do the work that many of our officers feel is peace officer work, that it is work that we should never have been doing in the first place. And that now will put us even more at risk because the line between peace officer and code enforcement officer has blurred, and it will become even more blurry when you have us doing full-on drug enforcement activity. So last Friday, we were told, well, let me back up. Previously, our enforcement efforts have been on a voluntary basis. Any officer who's been on the marijuana enforcement project has been voluntary. Our officers have been able to say yes or no. I do or I don't want to do this activity. But we were told last Friday that it would be mandatory for now all of us to begin doing drug enforcement activity. So we're going to all be required to do this. And so many of our officers are extremely concerned about their safety because we are not peace officers. We don't have safety retirements. We don't have modified safety retirements. And as you know, at this point, we're inspecting full-on grow operations. Grow operations that are being operated by gangs, by the cartel. This is criminal operations, and we have code enforcement officers out there enforcing on these people without any type of safety retirement or provisions for our safety that if I were to get killed or shot at a grow operation that's being operated by gang members or the cartel, who takes care of my family? Peace officers have this safety net. They have that protection. If something happens to them, they have that protection, but I don't. We also don't have safety provisions that peace officers have related to our personal security. Under California law, peace officers have their personal information protected from searches. So if they get pulled over or Google searches, things like that, if an officer arrests somebody on one of these projects or these drug enforcement inspections, the person being arrested isn't going to be able to find the officer's information for retribution, but they can find ours. You could Google me. You can come to my house and kill me if you want, if you're one of those drug members or gang members who's operating the grow. If because of my actions, you're losing thousands of plants and your profits, you can Google me and come and find my family, and you can find where I live. We're not provided a secured location for our work. When Sheriff's deputies go to work each day, they pull into a secure lot where they take their personal vehicles and they're safe. They can get out of their car, go into the office, change, do their gear, leave. At the end of the day, check out, and they're still safe getting to and from their car. Our office isn't like that. I leave to my car, and there's nobody there to protect me each day at the end of the night to make sure that a disgruntled drug dealer's not there to shoot me.
Rachel, I don't want to cut you a sore. This is important information. I know you probably speak for others...
I do.
...in your department. So I'm going to give you a little more time, but maybe you can...
Okay.
Another, I mean, it's important stuff, so I'll give, you know, a lot of you can conclude. I know I trusted Tom Misrick's going to address some of this on behalf of your represented unit, but it used being an officer certainly is important information. So take another, you know, a few seconds here and go ahead.
Okay. So there are inherent dangers related to this activity, to this drug enforcement activity and the cultivations. And the board, I know that you're aware of it because you acknowledged this in 2014 when we had the ordinances and the amendments. So we ask you to please consider not placing this responsibility on the shoulders of officers, code enforcement officers, who have no safety retirements, who have no assurance that they're going to be able to be protected and have their family protected, who don't have the same assurances that peace officers do. Because truly, this is drug enforcement activity. This is not simple zoning inspections. And our officers feel that it is inappropriate and irresponsible to simply add marijuana restrictions to the zoning code and expect that our code enforcement officers are able to safely enforce this going forward. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, Rachel. Thank you for your work on behalf of the county. Okay, we'll come back to that in a moment. I think, you know, there's some important points there, I think, that we need to sort through in just a moment, but let's hear from our speakers. So, okay, Ricardo Garcia, and then Tom Misrick. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, board. My name is Ricardo Garcia. I've been working for the County of Sacramento for the past 12 and a half years in the capacity of a code enforcement officer. Marijuana is still against federal law and is recognized as a Schedule I-type drug, which is defined as currently having no acceptable medical use and a high potential for drug abuse. I speak on behalf of myself and my fellow code enforcement officers in that it is, in our opinion, that without law enforcement training to back up this type of enforcement is potentially dangerous for us. It has been our experience and observation while in the field, we have been exposed to chemicals that may pose a hazard to us, in addition to vicious dogs and individuals with criminal records and gang ties. We, as code enforcement officers, are not physically equipped, nor have we had the extensive training to deal with the enforcement of illegal drugs. We recently had an officer that was viciously attacked by a dog that broke loose of his chain, and the officer was seriously injured. It was later determined that there was marijuana on the premises. We don't deal with nine plants. When we do inspections, we're talking 100-plus plants, mostly from the criminal element. There are other concerns in regards to the team that have some medical challenges. Being exposed to these conditions could potentially compromise their health even further. In the past, our department has had volunteers to do marijuana enforcement. However, I personally have stayed away from all illegal drugs as this does not align with my moral beliefs. And just wanted you guys to hear that.
Okay. Thank you, Ricardo. Thank you for being here today.
Thank you.
Appreciate your comments and certainly your work on behalf of the county. Okay, next I have Tom Misrick and then Carla Lowe, and those are our last two speakers. And then we'll come back to this item here in a moment.
Thank you for having me today. I'm sure most of you know me, and thank you, board, for addressing this issue with us. I can't speak any more than what these people have done. I mean, they're out there on a daily basis in the line. I can just tell you what we've met and conferred on with management on this issue. And it was discussed about the safety. It was discussed about not being compensated safety pay. We were assured that the sheriffs would be present with us at all actions to enforce this legislation. I heard over the weekend and just yesterday, which was a little dismaying, that that is not necessarily going to be the case. Not always are we going to have the protection of the sheriff's office with us. And I really do think that that's not the way to run this business. It's really interesting that zoning, and it's just like in state law, as you all know, laws get made without funding. Who's going to pay for this? Planning Department made a nice attempt at putting it together, but they even admit that it was going to be expensive. They even admit that there really isn't any funding for this. So the one thing that needs to be considered is if you do have code officers doing this work and taking away from their normal duties, which is a reach of different things, they do, not only do they do fire department items, they do waste management issues and not get reimbursed for those, they are the lowest paid in this area for the work that they do. And the items that they have on their plate are the most of any other code enforcement in this whole area. They do a number of things. To add this to it with the reduced staff that they have and the financial wearthaw that they have been imposed against, I think it's just poor planning to do it at this exact moment. They need training to begin with, and they need funding. Once those are in place, then ETI really doesn't have any issues about this ordinance. But until that happens, I think it's premature. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Tom. Appreciate your comments. Okay. And the last speaker I have signed up is Carla Lowe. Carla?
Thank you, Don. I'm Carla Lowe. First, I'd like to remind the people who are in this boardroom, Mr. Natoli might remember, but this board has always been extremely concerned about the health and safety of its people, of its citizens. Forty years ago, when I first came to this board meeting, Mr. Natoli was a staff person to Toby Johnson, as I require, as I remember.
You remember.
We asked that you ban the head shops then selling the toys and tools that were designed for youth, luring kids to use of marijuana, the Frisbees and the bongs that I brought and showed. That became, that action became a state law soon thereafter. A number of years later, we came and asked you to ban and not prevent, to prevent, not even ban, needle exchange programs for the health and safety of our people. And again, this board took a positive action. About five years ago, as I recall, we came and asked you to shut, to close the pot shops that were springing up, like someone said, more frequently than Starbucks around Sacramento County. And the board then said, "We need to hear from the cities." My husband and I went and spoke with, giving the backup material to all seven of the cities in Sacramento County. And all six, by the way, did ban the pot shops for so-called medical marijuana, all with the exception of the city. And I was listening to Rachel talking about the danger that those folks in enforcement risk facing every day. I need to remind everybody that what we're talking about, this meyer, this mecca of marijuana is all in the name of so-called medical marijuana. And as someone wisely pointed out, is illegal, all illegal, under federal law, every single bit of it. The 50,000 grows in California, $35 billion business. California provides 60% of all of the marijuana in the United States. This is serious business. I encourage this board to ban, make it as tight as possible, an ordinance. Frankly, I thought the nine plants was a typo. I didn't even realize that currently you allow nine plants growing. That's absurd. Absurd. Do you know that one ounce of marijuana sells for about $300 in the pot shops in Sacramento? 16 ounces in a pound? And you can grow in a home, ironically, you can grow, get four or five yields a year. Do you realize what we're talking about in money? I encourage you to reconsider that nine number. It's absurd. I really encourage you, and I think I read, and I gave you all the backup material before the planning commission, I gave you all the data from Colorado, I gave you this infographic that's all documented, all of the harms of marijuana. I encourage you to ban every form of commercial marijuana in Sacramento County. Make it absolutely as tight as possible. And I heard your concern, Ms. Frost, about people from out of the area coming in. You know what? Currently, this is a NIMBY issue, not my backyard. Sacramento County has got to be responsible for its own citizen. And maybe down the line, they will push it further and further and further, just as we did 40 years ago when we first banned the head shops. City after city after city said, "Not in my backyard." I encourage you also, I didn't see that you have banned mobile delivery, but under the legal cities' facts, it can be banned. I didn't see that. I couldn't download it. Yesterday, I tried to see your absolute wording of your ordinance, and I see the numbers are blinking. I've given you all the backup material. I encourage you, listen to what your DA said, listen to what your sheriff said. Talk to Tom Gorman, who used to live here in Sacramento, who's now head of Haida in Colorado. Everything we can do to discourage children from using this highly potent, long-acting, addicting, mind-altering drug that is destroying our kids' developing brains, which take 25 years to develop. It's got an impact on every man, woman, and child in our community. Rentals, home values goes down. And then if we could talk for another hour, we would talk about the environment and the damage that's being done in our forests. And the people who call us week after week after week saying they can't even sleep because the people next door are growing this stuff. It has such a stench, folks. You know, it's called skunk. We had a, I have to tell you this story.
Ricardo, you'd wrap it up. I'll let you tell the last story, though.
One more story. This is true. Skunk is the name of the street weed, right? Everybody knows that. We had a dead skunk under our house two weeks ago. The smell permeated our house. I didn't realize, with my broken neck, I could only go a couple miles from home, but in two different situations, at a restaurant and at a retailer, people thought I was smoking weed for my medical marijuana, for my broken neck. This stuff is everywhere, and we've got to do everything we can to get rid of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Carla, and thanks for your work over the years.
Thank you, Don.
Okay. With that, then Carla was the last speaker I had signed up. So if there's no one else who wants to come forward, I know that there are board members may have questions and comments, and I guess I would just take us back to NAV. Comments we heard from some of the code enforcement officers, that wasn't very clearly addressed. And I think if we're getting into another realm here, certainly in light of the testimony we've heard, obviously, from employees, but I think as highlighted in the comments from our chief and district attorney, there are, you know, some relevant issues there. And if law enforcement isn't going to, isn't planning to accompany in all these enforcement actions, then I think that's problematic. But I'll let you address, at least starting here, I'm sure we've got other questions. I see Mr. Kennedy's punched up as well, so.
We have Barry Chamberlain, our chief of code enforcement, and I would like to have him address the issues and the training that he is proposing with this resolution. Barry?
That's fine. And I think that, you know, what procedures we're going to use too, because that's why I heard some about you being beyond the training and...
Training procedure, his outreach with EMD, with the sheriff's office, so he...
Good afternoon, board.
Good afternoon.
Barry Chamberlain, chief of code enforcement. Some very good points made by my officers. This is, we're just starting with this, working with EMD to get some training specific to marijuana inspections that we're working with to get on tap in May or June. The issues, the rest of the issues, we can work through as we get to them. I mean, we're just getting started. Asking for sheriff's help on all of our inspections, couldn't speak for the sheriff when we are speaking about it at our staff meeting. So moving forward, we'll work with the sheriff's department, figure out a plan to where we can actually have a sheriff's officer with all of our officers when they do inspections. The plan beginning, that we're going to begin with is what we have done in the past, and that's have an officer in the north and an officer in the south to work the grows, the outdoor grows. And then after a season, we disperse the cases to our officers to finish up. We can look at that whole process, but it's been pretty successful so far. I think that, I think that there's a good possibility that there's going to be a large number of cases. The cases totals have went up every year that we have dealt with. Going forward, we may need to add additional help to do this. My feeling is, is that it's going to be a bigger part of our process and that our officers, all of our officers are going to have to take part in it.
Well, I would, thank you, Barry. Maybe some questions of you on the, I would just say that here in the comments, and I guess this would be certainly to NAV and others from a budgetary standpoint, that, you know, it was one thing when we were regulating medicinal grows, and now if it's for recreational or personal use, doesn't require the medicinal backdrop, however veiled or weak or strong that was, that I think too, you know, the point Barry makes and others is that, you know, the prevalence may very well increase. And I think the need for, you know, kind of the general health and safety and welfare of the... of the, you know, citizens of this county, and for those that choose and those that choose not to, you know, we're going, that's an obligation we have. And to have code enforcement as a part of that is one thing. But I think to have the proper law enforcement backup and assistance and other training is key. And it's going to have a budgetary impact. But to me, it falls under that category of general health and welfare for the citizens of this county. And if this is the ordinance that we put in place, then we need to be able to stand behind it and offer our personnel the proper support to carry it out as best they can.
Absolutely. A couple of the comments that I heard, I want to make sure that the work that we have at the sheriff's office, that when officers need assistance, that that assistance is there. Chief Borelji is here. I'm going to talk to Scott and also to Eric to make sure that when our folks need help, that they're there. A couple of the other comments that were made about getting more funding, I think as we're looking at our budget, staring at us in June, and with Barry's input and with Penrose's input, if augmentation is needed, we'll be back here recommending that to you. The other thing that I do want to have Barry look at a little bit is the testimony that, and I forget her name, but when she did put that vest on...
Rachel.
Rachel, it does look like a cop at that point.
That's one of my questions. Is it really necessary to have that, I mean, it's the same color as the sheriff's vest, it's got a badge on the shoulder? Used to be, they wore bulletproof vests under their clothes. I mean, I don't know what's changed.
That's what I want to, I am embarrassed to admit that I do not know why that switch happened. I have an idea why we got there.
Hopefully, it wasn't because it looked cool.
No, I don't believe so. I think this came when our animal control officer, I believe there was a shooting.
When, yeah, he was killed.
I want to work with Barry, and I want Barry to work with our employees. And she is absolutely right, that does look like a police officer. And if we have a different way to get there, let's explore that.
Well, on that, I'll just follow through to the chair. Maybe there's different variations of, you know, depending on what their beat is and what they're, you know, what they're doing. I mean, because I'll tell you, I've gone out with a code enforcement officer down in District Two in some areas, that having that vest, you know, in looking like law enforcement, it was, I mean, I wouldn't have gone in some of the apartment complexes unless I was with her wearing that vest. And it probably is a protection mechanism, as much, but I see that it's not necessary, I mean, for every code enforcement officer under any circumstances.
That needs to be looked at.
Yeah, the attire, both from a personal safety, but certainly from a, you know, what you project, and to, I think, the other things that could come of that, because if they see a law enforcement, they get their name clearly printed on their vest.
That was my, that was my other issue that I want to work with Barry and Mike Penrose, is that the point she made on that, that's a very valid point. And she's right, that if you post certified, you do not, you cannot look folks' address up. And if they're making enforcement and they can, they can be identified, we need to look at what kind of safety we can do.
But there's a balance we have to find here. And again, you want certain people to have the protection, certainly to be official, and some people can recognize and identify them, hopefully for a positive reason, but also to understand who it is that they may be encountering on their property. In a lot of cases, that, you know, that's touchy enough as it is. But, okay, Supervisor Frost?
All right. I have a question relating to code enforcement. It sounds like you have, all your code enforcement officers at one time or another have to be, they now have to be willing to work marijuana, so to speak.
Yes, ma'am.
So there's not a way to have people designated to just specialize in that type of enforcement, where they're specially trained and qualified, so that we don't have, I mean, it kind of looks like we have long-term employees who are almost afraid to enter into this part of code enforcement. Is there, is it something that they all have to be able to do, or can you designate specialists in that area?
I think that that's a possibility. That would have to be staff that we would pull aside and have specially trained, as far as how many we would need at this point in time, I don't really know.
Just seems like if you walk into a situation where you're afraid, they can smell your fear.
So understand that we have a rental housing team and a priority housing team, and actually, even on zoning, where we could walk into something like that and not even know it's there.
Oh, right.
So, I mean, we have rental housing that does 200, 300 inspections a week, and they're going in apartment complexes. Now, that ordinance says that we would require the property owner to give a certified signed note to allow it to go, take place in apartment complexes. And some of the places that we go, the complex owners don't really care. So, I mean, we could walk into this at any time. I mean, the danger's there. There, that's the truth. I mean, regardless of what we do, there's a, there's a danger there. So I think that that's part of the business. The bulletproof vest came about because of the death of the animal control officer. And the chief at the time felt that we needed that for our own safety, whether we changed the look. I just think that if we're in the field doing inspections, we don't know what's going to happen, and that's just one more safety tool. That's my, my feeling.
Are they going in pairs, or are they going alone?
Rental housing goes in pairs. Officers, if they're not, if they have a problem property that they're going to, that they know of, they are, they are welcome to take another officer with them. We do not, we allow that. So it's basically according to what your feeling is about a case. I mean, once you went to a case, once you could get a good feel for what is going on there. And if you're not comfortable with that, grab another officer to go with you, or call the pop officers and have them go with you.
Thank you.
Okay, Supervisor Kennedy, you had a...
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This isn't necessarily for you, Barry, if you want to sit down.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to make some comments on the actual ordinance. And I'm going to come at it from a slightly different angle, probably, than others. And that's that, so I did not support and did not vote for Proposition 64, not necessarily because I'm an advocate one way or the other about marijuana, I'm fairly agnostic about it. My concerns more are on the readiness of the community and the impacts on the community. I did not feel that, as a county supervisor, Sacramento County was ready. And I think that I could probably guess that 50 other counties could probably say the same thing. And the impacts of just doing nothing has not necessarily led us to the right place either. In District Two, we have these huge growhouses, commercial growhouses, illegal growhouses in residential neighborhoods. And that frankly is my biggest concern. And as long as we continue to, in my mind, for lack of a better phrase, bury our head in the sand and pretend that this isn't happening, this isn't coming, it's here and it is coming. And I think that we need to get out ahead of it and not wait until we see what others are doing, because it's here. I've got hundreds of growhouses, some of them yielding $3 million a year in the neighborhoods. And with the ancillary crime that comes with that, I need to get it out of the residential neighborhoods. And in my opinion, the way you do that is by you actually regulate and you actually go after the bad actors. Now, the sheriff's department chief, you guys, you know, I've been out on bus with you guys, and you're doing a great job working with all of the local jurisdictions, including probation, as a joint task force. But they can't keep up with it, and they're not going to be able to with the numbers and the type of crime that's related to this. I think the only way that we really get our arms around this at this point is not to prohibit commercial marijuana activities entirely, but regulate, you know, condition the hell out of them. Put them in places where it's appropriate, or, I know appropriate's a relative word, but where it's going to have the least amount of impact on the community. Until we do that and make it so that it's not as profitable to do these in neighborhoods, you know, I just don't see the situation getting better in the residences. And then we've got the, you know, the home invasions and wrong properties and innocent people, we've heard all the stories. I don't see that changing if we continue to say no. You know, we have to say, "No, not there if you do it here, and we're going to hit you hard if you do it there." And that's the way I see it. So I don't support the ordinance because I think that a total prohibition on commercial activities rather than highly regulated enforcement of commercial activities, which is, I think, more reasonable, more realistic, and would be more effective in the long run. So for that reason, I think that when Proposition 64 passed, I didn't feel Sacramento County was ready. When this passes, I don't think Sacramento County's ready. Thank you.
Just to follow on, as it relates to, not so much in our comments yet, but questions about the enforcement, maybe Barry, if you could come back up for a second, I wanted to ask about, because as I understand it, you know, we, not as I understand it, we have, but outdoor grows, we have a task force that goes after major grows, you know, the clandestine ones. But we have a process that, you know, it may show case closure, but you give, send somebody a letter, and then what they do is they move their plants and they take them somewhere else, and, you know, case closed, they're not there anymore. But, and it's, obviously, if they're in houses, you've got to discover that through, you know, proper methods, and you can't just go busting people's doors down in most cases. And there are protections. But I guess I would ask that, you know, under this ordinance, again, having had the experience we've had, and certainly with you at the helm and your background in code enforcement, and we use a civil procedure and process that certainly can have, you know, administrative penalties and fines attached to it, that can be pretty hefty, that gets people's attention. But, you know, with changes in law relative to decriminalization and so forth, I get that. But we still have code enforcement officers going out there, and you issue warnings in most cases, or notice that you're in violation, and, you know, that's the process we use. But it can be accelerated to somebody. But could you describe briefly what the process is? Because I think to the point that Supervisor Kennedy made, again, I'm not supportive of, you know, basically saying you can be there and hit them hard there. I'm at the point that you, if they're not allowed, you hit them hard wherever they're at. And, you know, the ability, your ability, both from a budgetary standpoint, but certainly a personnel standpoint, you need to be, you and the others that are part of that enforcement effort, need to be properly supported to allow you to do that. Otherwise, I think we're talking about is, you know, and Chief Borelji said, you hope that we keep it static. But, you know, if static is, and whether you're in District Two, or you're somewhere in District Five, or Three, or Four, or One, you know, corporate area, that we need to be able to, to move, to move swiftly, and certainly with, you know, with due process. But, so I guess if you could explain, because again, as I understand it, particularly with some of the outdoor rural grows, you get to them when you get to them in priority order, and they get noticed, and guess what?
It's a condensed, it's a condensed period of time. We give an advisory, we inspect, we send them a letter saying that we've had a complaint to Chaval Grove. Most of the time, those complaints come from the sheriff. There are some that come from constituents, but a lot of them come from the sheriff where they've seen them. We send an advisory letter and say that we're going to inspect in five days. Sometimes we don't get there within five days because of the number. And then we go out, and a lot of them are there, a lot of them are not. A lot of the bigger grows are there because they're huge. So they're there when we get there, and we issue admin penalties, and then they remove them. The sheriff helps us follow up to make sure they remove them. Some of the smaller ones that are in the city, at the height of the enforcement, it takes longer than five days. And then also, it has to do with the availability of sheriff. If the sheriff is not available, we don't go out. The officers aren't going to go out to these grows without a sheriff's officer.
So, you know, you give them fair warning. Not all code cases are handled that way. But I guess with marijuana, is the law such that it's treated in a way that that's protected property, that you couldn't show up? And if you've got, you know, where you're prohibited from having an outdoor grow, and you've got 100 of them in the backyard, and I'm talking more, maybe indoor, it would be the same thing, is your ability to confiscate, or we just send them a notice and you start fining them?
Excuse me. We don't confiscate, you know, that's, that's...
And so law enforcement hands it over to you?
No, law enforcement is with us.
Okay. But they, but you said they give you the note, and you go out, you send an advisory note.
Yes.
So does law enforcement have to be able to confiscate on the spot?
I can't answer that. I'm not sure.
Because I'm, you know, getting to the root of being effective, you know, it's one, you know, and again, this is not a criticism of mine, I'm just, I want to sort this out because it's before us properly, and it goes to about personnel and how you encounter folks and so forth. And if in fact we're going to be serious about it, which I think we are, and, you know, and if we're going to do that, then the process we've used, you can say it's effective in the sense that it, you close the cases, and they move on, and either they take their plants and they relocate them, or they, you get them during the fall and they harvest it, and it's, you know, basically money in the bank. Plants are gone, and, you know, and the neighborhood can say, "Yeah, it's done." But I think if we're going to be effective in this, and there's going to be a cost associated with doing it, you know, financial costs, but there's a cost associated with not doing it. And I guess I would just say that I'm of the opinion that if we're going to, again, I certainly echoing off of Patrick's comments, if we're going to actually be effective and be serious and provide the level of support for code enforcement, the sheriff's standpoint, you know, this is kind of just kind of moving marbles around on the table a bit, because that's what happens a lot of times. You go out there and you do your job, but we don't take the plants, they just move them somewhere else, you know? And so they pull up to U-Haul, you've probably been there seeing them do it, you know? And now that transport is not necessarily illegal, I guess, I want to get the sense that, you know, beyond saying you're empowered to do it, and in reality, that this, you know, gives you not only the authorities under due process, but also that it has the support, personnel and financial-wise, to actually do it. Because otherwise, you recognize this is a big county, and that, you know, if it's just kind of good enough to go along with it, and I don't think that's the attitude that either of your departments take, but you're also, you know, working in a structure you have a lot of demands on your, you know, calls for service and so forth. But I guess I'm getting the sense, and, you know, and I've shared this certainly offline, that sending a note during harvest season, say you've got five days or 10 days, you know, either I harvest it if I'm growing it, or I move it, you know? You think I'm going to take those plants and burn them or destroy them? Not happening. And so we're just moving the problem around, I guess.
That's a policy change. I mean, that's, that's our general policy that we use on all...
No, I know, from a code enforcement, which is a softer approach, and I'm not saying it has to give, you know, you're not going to imprison people over the thing. But on the other hand, if you're just moving it around, it's one thing to clean up debris on your property and, you know, haul it away or stack it more neatly, so you, but this, we're talking about serious money and the whole criminal element that falls behind a portion of this, so...
Supervisor Natoli, I did ask Chief Borelji to sort of give some assistance when they see grows and plants, what's the sheriff's department's, that's okay at that point.
Well, I think Barry is correct. We do have that period when the time comes to confiscate the plants. If the plants are still there, we are responsible for confiscating those plants and disposing of them. And we will do that. But as Barry said, sometimes there is that five-day grace period in there, which, as you pointed out, they do pull them or destroy them or harvest them, and that is a policy change that would be required, as Barry indicated.
So let me just ask you a question. I know Supervisor Peter just wants to weigh in, but so, chief and both chiefs here, what's your sense, you get compliance in a lot of cases, but, you know, my sense has been, at least anecdotally from people that, you know, that live in the neighborhoods, certainly talking with folks over time, that there's very little, you know, disposal, destruction of it. They either harvest it or they move it. And so basically, you're just giving them a notice to move your stuff to somewhere else where we'll have to discover you once again, and/or you harvested, and, you know, we'll see you next season. And I just, and if it's going to be with the hydroponics and so forth, where they really get rooted in, you know, in a way of speaking, certainly in houses and so forth, I mean, you know, the yields, this is a business operation in residential areas, in agricultural residential areas, in agricultural communities, where it can become very invasive. And I think the whole thing we've heard from both the district attorney and from, you know, both of you, in one sense or the other, becomes a, you know, a safety issue. And, you know, and so by just giving them notice to move, which in essence it is, policy change or not, I'm not so sure that that's very effective, and maybe that's societally, that's as far as we can go with this. But I guess I'm not convinced that if in fact we're going to deal with it in the neighborhoods, that, you know, just as you pull up to U-Haul and then move it around the corner to another house or to another backyard, that chasing that, you're never going to catch it to any great extent. And so I guess I'm looking for something that's going to be, hopefully provide you more tools and be more effective and provide you the support to do that. So that's my comments, and I guess I'll let Susan weigh in, too, because you may have...
As long as you both are there, does whether code goes out or the sheriff goes out depend on who the complainer calls?
No.
No, it does not.
No.
So what, I mean, if I call 311 and I say, "There's a guy who's growing dope in a empty house down the street from me," who gets the call?
We do.
Code does.
Code does.
Correct.
So you go out and verify that it's there, then you...
No. We call the sheriff.
You call the sheriff?
Yeah.
So everything starts...
We send out the advisory, the five-day advisory, and then we contact the sheriff. And we have specific days during the week that we go out with them.
Okay. I think, for discussion on policy, is whether we're going to send that letter.
Yeah.
Okay. Supervisor Frost, do you have...
I also wanted to know, when you go, assuming this ordinance passes, a person who is growing in a commercial, is that a felony? in a commercial, is that a felony or does it, where does it fall on the law enforcement scale?
It's a misdemeanor, 100%. It is not a felony any longer.
Wow. Is that Prop 47?
It's Prop 6...
Always part of 64?
Give you all those particulars on the exact levels of whatnot it is, but it's pretty much 100% misdemeanor crime for marijuana now.
Yeah, Prop 64 reclassified essentially every marijuana-related crime from a felony, from any felony to straight misdemeanor. So, not to publicize it, but you could have 100 million pounds of marijuana grown in your backyard and you can get a misdemeanor for that.
So, that's...
Irrespective of your record.
Irrespective of your record.
Record.
Yeah.
Yes.
So, if you've been busted five times or 100 times before, it's still a misdemeanor? It isn't a bunch of misdemeanors that collect and you get to a certain number and then it adds up to something more?
Right. That's Prop 64.
So, then that, does that mean that when the sheriff's department goes in, do you destroy the plants?
We will book them for destruction, correct.
But they what?
We will book them for destruction.
Book them for destruction. How often does that happen?
I don't know off the top of my head. I mean, I could gather some stats, but...
Pretty infrequently?
Yeah. No, more often than not, we actually book quite a few plants.
Do you?
Yeah. There are a lot of times, there are a lot of times when we come back for the five-day period or whatever, the plants are completely gone.
I would say, I have a neighbor, a couple doors down, who, somebody called on them and they were growing in their backyard and sheriff's deputy came by and said, I'll be back in a couple of days, whatever it was, and we need to get that out of there, and it was gone.
Oh, yeah, it works and they move it in a lot of cases, so...
Thank you.
Supervisor Frost, I wonder if you had questions for...
I guess I just wanted to say if you know you're calling on marijuana, why send code enforcement? If code enforcement needs backup with sheriff, why not just send sheriff? But I guess you don't always know you're going, so that could be a bad question.
Well, when we actually get a complaint ding with that, we would, we'd go with the sheriff.
You would just have sheriff go out?
Yeah, we would go with the sheriff.
You'd go with the sheriff?
We would go with the sheriff, yes.
But why not just send the sheriff if...
Can't answer that question.
If you're duplicating efforts, it seems like...
Well, other than it's in the zoning code and code enforcement enforces the zoning code.
That's something to look at.
I think we need to talk about that.
I agree. Take a look at this aspect.
The process of following up.
Right.
Okay.
I'm ready to move the item.
All right. Okay, we have a motion. Any other comments by board members? If not, okay, we have a motion to approve. It's moved in second then to approve the ordinance, introduce, this will be the introduction of the ordinance, is that correct, Flo?
Yes.
Okay, this is first reading, come back to us in two weeks.
The adoption, yes.
Okay, all right. So, to introduce it and then bring it back in two weeks. And you'll bring back with regards to discussion, take a look at it, you'll come back at a future date on that, so...
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. All right, nothing further than please vote.
And the motion carries with Supervisor Kennedy voting no and Supervisor Serna is absent.
Right.
And we do need to adopt the zoning code component.
Was that bundled in the...
I thought it was in the recommendations.
Staff recommendation.
Okay, yeah, good.
So, just before record that the motion included, moved staff recommendation, including the ordinance introduction as well. Good point for clarification. Okay, and I just would note that I know Supervisor Serna also want to be sure that, I think I noted he was out of town, but he is on county business and he's traveled to Mexico and I wanted to be sure to make sure that was clearly reflected in the record, so... Okay, with that then, that takes that item and we'll see it back on consent calendar in a couple of weeks. Okay, any other, we do have a couple of adjournments, but any other items on the agenda that we need to come back to?
No.
Okay.
You're just down to your supervisor comments and CEO comments.
All right, let's go to CEO comments.
I had two comments. One is I wanted to draw your attention to item 84, which is a receive and file. It's on SHRA on our January 31st, yeah, January 31st meeting, I forgot that date. There were 11 items that Supervisor Kennedy had asked for us to come back and report.
Only 11?
Only 11.
That was a condensed version.
He talked longer than 11.
We condensed them. What you have in front of you is a status report on those items. The big one that is still pending is the first item that we listed was on how the JPA that we have for SHRA, what are the options that are available to this board on, do we dissolve the JPA, do we have a hybrid JPA, where do we take that product, which is SHRA? And again, as a reminder, the question, the discussion there is basically since the R is gone, redevelopment's not part of that. So, we are working on that item with SHRA Executive Director and staff and our plan is to come back to you in May and give you a status update on what options the board has. I just want to make sure that you're aware and that you knew that that's what that item was about.
Okay, thank you.
Also, wanted to just let the board members know and viewers know that on April 25th, we have two items that I wanted to spotlight. First one is we're going to recognize the volunteers, which is in the morning at 10:00 a.m. So, just want to make sure everybody knew about that. And the second one is more on the fiscal side. At 2:30 p.m., we are slated to present to you a monthly rate increase in Sacramento County Water Agency. Just want to make sure that supervisors knew that that item is coming to you that afternoon.
Really looking forward to that one.
And that's all I have.
I just would note on that, that I've talked with Michael Peterson in my briefing, but you need to have the historical rate increase, which I'm sure they will have attached, but for benefit of us all and certainly the public that's viewing, but I think recognizing, you know, certainly what's going to be requested of us, but secondly, kind of where we came from and, you know, some of the associated costs, I know that'll be bundled in the staff report, but it's important that be charted out going back, I believe, 10 years to see where we've been. There's significant increases over the past decade.
And the other thing that we have incorporated in there and we'll make sure that you see it is also all the other municipal utilities, what their rates are, so you have a total aggregate what the bill looks like.
And I guess I would just offer one other suggestion that they're going to make their request based upon what they believe they need as a bottom line. I would suggest that, you know, you and or Rob or Michael be prepared that if, you know, depending upon what this board, whether we embrace it at all, but, you know, if something less than, you know, what are the priorities within that list? Because it includes staffing and capital projects, I referenced this morning in some of my comments about the capital improvement program. Again, they have, you know, responsibility to bring it to us, but I do think that we need to have some potential options available to us should we consider doing something less than that and how that plays itself out, so...
Got it.
Thanks. Okay, board member comments before we get to adjournments?
Yeah, just a real quick one, I want to wish the best of luck to Patty Gillett, the NCEA National Championships in Waco.
Thank you.
All right, very good, all right. Any other comments before adjournments? Ms. Frost? Okay, I have none. Ms. Peters is in, we have an adjournment.
Thank you. I'd like to adjourn tonight in memory of Roger Burke and Paus. Last month, the communities of Carmichael and Fair Oaks lost a dedicated leader and a strong supporter of law enforcement with the passing of Roger. He lived in West Fair Oaks, which is part of the Carmichael Recreation Park District and have many fond memories of him. One of my first, my first encounter with him actually was involving the vacant lot on Palm Avenue that said, "Future Park Site." It had been there for more than 40 years. And he questioned me when we first met, about, are you ever going to build a park there? And I told him we would and amazingly enough was able to keep that promise. In 2008, we dedicated Patriots Park. With his help and that of the Carmichael Park District, we crafted a pretty unique deal out there. Every year now, a ceremony is held at that park honoring fallen heroes with a connection to the area who served in the Armed Forces, Law Enforcement and Fire Safety, and Roger was always there. And I will really miss not seeing him at this year's ceremony. He was very active and an integral part of the West Fair Oaks Neighborhood Watch and on National Night Out, he hosted probably the most popular gathering in the Sheriff's North Division because he smoked his own meats and he served, smoked meat and southern-style barbecue. And towards the end of National Night Out, all the, we had a big crowd of deputies and chiefs from the Sheriff's Department there. It was delicious food and he was, he was very popular. He was a regular attendee at the Fair Oaks Community Coffee Meetings in my district and knew everyone there, so I'm going to miss seeing him at those meetings also. Roger believed in community and was also an active engaged citizen, a good example for all.